We can start. Call the meeting to order at 6:32. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I think we have just one, 6.4 under Discussion Matters. A real brief discussion on CSSU representation, which is specifically about, CBU has requested an additional rep on the CSSU board. Does anyone else have anything to add or change? All right, Audience and Communication. Thanks for coming.
I just had one.
Yes, Sue.
I'm Sue TiVo. The Action Matters 7.0, I know there's not room for discussion during that time, but I just wanted to just make sure that we would be clear on the personnel action items. If there's any cost implications on those when they come to come up for you guys to vote on them. I think it'd be helpful to hear if there are any cost implications on those action matters.
Thank you. Yes.
I just have a quick question for clarification purposes. Are you going to be the new chair?
Yes.
Okay.
She already is the new chair.
Well, I thought so, but I didn't see it.
Takes a bit.
Any other Audience and Communication? All right, moving right along. 4.0 Presentations, 4.1 Civic and Social Responsibility Climate Committee. And I think this is Greg.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to present tonight on behalf of the Charlotte Central School Climate Committee. This is a report out on progress made on our climate action plan. So the overarching goal of our climate action plan is to foster a safe, caring, and positive school environment where members are respectful to themselves, others, and property. And this goal should stand really in service to our CCS mission, which is to develop citizens who learn actively and collaboratively, think creatively and critically, live responsibly and respectfully, contribute positively to their community, and pursue excellence in their academic and individual interests. It should also stand in service to the CCS outcomes. Academic rigor, civic and social responsibility, transferable life skills. And although the school board has designated tonight's report as a potential indicator of civic and social responsibility, the work of the CCS Climate Committee and the action plan really impacts all three outcome areas. So the school, the school climate action plan has three main focus areas, and those focus areas are as follows. That CCS will be a more respectful and engaging place for all CCS students. To improve overall staff wellness and morale. And that CCS will feel welcoming and invited to all CCS families. Whoops. So data that informs our action planning and our climate work. School Climate Survey. We created a student, parent, and staff survey that was administered, administered, excuse me, in the spring of 2011. Those results were disaggregated, student, uh, student results were disaggregated by grade, by gender and grade level for each question. We use our school-wide incidence of behavior data, otherwise known as SWISS data. We use, we use the middle-level student bullying survey, also a parent welcoming survey, and a student cafeteria survey. It's just an image of some students interacting with a food map that was put up in the cafeteria this year, and also a student putting a respect ticket into our respect ticket tube. So progress towards Goal Area 1, which was that CCS will be a more respectful and engaging place for all CCS students. So we are continuing to provide school-wide instruction on the three school-wide expectations. Respect yourself, respect others, respect property. They're very simple, they're straightforward. There are very few of them by design, and every year we start the school year with a school-wide assembly explicitly going over those three expectations and what they look like in different settings. We follow that assembly up with what we call road shows, where me and the school counselor and the behavior, the planning room facilitator go from room to room, and with the classroom teacher and any other support staff present, go over these through three school-wide expectations, and again engage the kids in conversations about, so what's it look like in the hallway? What's it look like in the bathroom? What's it look like to take care of each other? To take care of ourself and to keep, take care of property when we're in the cafeteria? We use the language "take care of" interchangeably with respect, especially with the kindergarten, first and second graders. So other examples of how we explicitly teach those rules, road shows, ally assemblies, bullying prevention instruction assemblies, school-wide respect celebrations, and classroom reinforcement. We've continued to provide responsive classroom and developmental design methods in CCS classrooms. Responsive classroom is from K, covers grades K through 4, and developmental designs is essentially the same curriculum, but geared towards 5th through 8th grade classrooms. Continue to provide frequent, specific, and timely recognition for positive school behavior in all school settings. And this year, especially at the elementary school level, we've increased classroom focus to the reinforcement system we have of the tickets, which is to connect the positive behaviors that's happening in other settings back to the classroom and the child's teacher, because we feel that the most important relationship the child has at school is with their classroom teacher. So if the student gets a ticket from their bus driver for keeping themselves safe on the bus, rather than coming into the school and putting it in the tube, we've asked them to bring it to their teacher, celebrate with their teacher. The teacher puts it in their classroom bucket, and that becomes more of a bring it back to the classroom type celebration. So we've implemented school-wide celebrations of positive behavior in all school settings. I already mentioned the opening day. We also had an end-of-the-year celebration. We'll be planning another one for this year. We have a mascot, Champ, where Champ makes appearances throughout the school year. Classroom-based celebrations. I mentioned the K-5 Ally Assembly. Got a couple images of that coming up. And we're going to expand Spirit Week a little bit this year with more of a K-8 focus. Just mentioned the Ally Assembly. This was an assembly geared towards kindergarten through 5th grade students, and it was facilitated by School Counselor Vicki Nelson, along with Mike DiNicolò, our planning facilitator, and myself. But more importantly, some 3rd grade students led the way, performing or acting out a book entitled "One", which is a great book about essentially how to stand up to bullying. Also in this slide, you see a new image we're using called the CCS Shield of Respect, and it helps the kids remember their role as an upstander. So we're still on Goal 1, and our cafeteria was an area of focus around this. And that came through as identified by the Student Climate Survey. So some of the steps we've taken to improve the cafeteria, we've done some cosmetic improvements to the cafeteria space over the summer. We've created and administered a student cafeteria survey and have gathered over 150 responses. In fact, that's a picture of some 5th and 6th graders taking the survey on iPads after they ate their lunch not too long ago, and they were very eager to actually participate. We've created a subcommittee to analyze the student responses and recommend action steps. Our 4-Ars Committee has been wonderful supporting a sustainable composting initiative, including volunteer monitors for sorting station, and also student monitors for our sorting station. What we'd like to do, the word "sustainable" there, is to really move us off the point where we're relying on adult monitors and more to the stage where we're completely running on student, student system. And the CCS Food Squad has helped organize monthly Eat With Your Student Days in the cafeteria. So we've had, we've had days each month for the last few months where parents have been invited to come in and eat with their, with their kids. We're still on Goal 1. We did an analysis of the tiered social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So you've heard about, many of you have heard about our tiered systems of support, Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3. We completed an inventory of proactive and reactive social, emotional, and behavioral supports available to Charlotte School students, and have created a subcommittee to make recommendations to address gaps that were identified in tiered supports. And this, this committee is also going to be informed by the SWISS data that we collect. That's the behavioral data. So we're about to look at some of that behavioral data. Excuse me. But before we look at the data, I think it's very important to point this triangle out. So PBIS stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Supports. And this triangle symbolizes a typical kind of tiered support triangle or an RTI triangle. We have Tier 1 on the bottom, Tier 2 in yellow, Tier 3 in red. And essentially, Tier 1, we think of when we think of classroom instruction, Tier 1 is the area where all students in that tier, their needs are met, their instructional needs are met by just good, solid, best-first instruction. So what the teacher is skillfully presenting in the classroom that everybody is hearing, that's Tier 1. And usually, that meets the needs of 75 to 80% of our students. Tier 2, again, I'm talking about instructional, instructional perspective on the RTI pyramid, are for those students who are in need of a little extra, some supplemental, a double dose. So in addition to Tier 1, we've identified them as students who could use just a little bit more, hoping that with that little bit extra, they'll be able to fold back into Tier 1 where everything in the classroom will meet their needs. Tier 3, from an instructional standpoint, are those students who need more than Tier 2 can provide, and are those students usually identified as eligible for an IEP or a 504, something along those lines, an Individualized Educational Plan. Now, in terms of behavior, this is a triangle that the Swiss reporting software creates for us, but it mirrors the same kind of thing. So if you think of that Tier 1 as students whose needs are being met by first, by good first instruction. 93% of our kiddos have 0 or 1 behavioral referral, which is, which is a pretty impressive number. Up here, what you see is that Tier 2 and Tier 3, Tier 3 represents students who have six or more referrals. And Tier 2, students with between two and five referrals. And what's important to know is that Tiers 2 and 3 combined represents 31 kids. So the reason I wanted to show this slide before I show the next data point is I want to just have the context of the numbers of kids we're supporting. Now, it's not to say that we're not supporting all these kiddos. I think what, what this is indicative to is that the things that we're doing on a Tier 1 basis are meeting the needs for many of our children.
Greg, before you move off then.
Yep, yes.
When it says students with 0 to 1 referrals, does that mean up to this point in the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You're welcome. In fact, the data, the slide you're about to see is from September through February. There's no March data included. But nobody really gets into any kind of trouble in March, April, or May. So a lot of numbers on this slide. I'm not going to speak to all the numbers here, but what we wanted to do is get past the basic data and get down to grade level chunks, K through 2, 3 through 5, and 6 through 8. And for the first time in a while, we've looked at gender. We've broken this out by gender. So what you'll see is the four biggest areas for behavioral incidents reporting were classroom, bus, playground, and hall. Keep in mind that triangle that we just looked at. And if you look at these numbers, just big picture, you'll notice that there's a difference in gender, and there's difference in boys versus girls. There's an asterisk next to this, these numbers up here. Whoops, sorry about that. Because you might see a big number like here or here. The reason the asterisk is there is that it represents a very small number of students. We can't speak, we can't really give any more information beyond that because of confidentiality, but it should be noted that you could have a couple of students with real high needs with a lot of different supports and some individualized plans wrapped around them that are going to generate a number of referrals. So some pop-outs from the data. Already spoke to the 93% of CCS students having one or few, one or fewer behavioral referrals. The greatest percentage of referrals, 95, 94% of them, come from the areas of classroom, bus, playground, and hallway. 3rd through 5th grade boys have the greatest percentage of referrals. And months of October and January were the busiest behavior months this year. Last year, January was also the highest month for referrals. So one of the things that the team I mentioned earlier, that subcommittee is going to look at is, what is it about January? And what can we do leading up to January to help head that off at the pass? So I love this image. This is an image of the last studio day we had with the Best Practices Work, and I'm just going to talk to it a little bit because you wouldn't notice if I didn't say it. You've got three first-grade teachers here. Then you've got a, let's see. Okay, a math interventionist, our instructor, Bill Feely, and two students here. And this is just, that image just captures the spirit of this professional development, where you've got these guys, these teachers working on planning, these two adults working with kids, talking about their math thinking, and it's just an incredible model. So Area 2, Improve Overall Staff Wellness and Morale. Impact of school systems and structures has been a big theme here. When I say school systems and structures, we're talking about things that, that kind of make the building tick in terms of staff meetings, EST systems, including KidTalk EST meetings, grading systems, parent-teacher conferences, all the variety of things, professional development in service that impact the way staff do their work. So we created and administered a Staff Systems and Structures Survey. The survey results informed the creation and design of a new grade level year at Atlantis documents that we created last summer. The Program Council has identified this area to be its area of focus. And Audrey and I and Connie continue to look for opportunities to streamline school systems to support student learning and staff wellness. One example of that is the way we're going to walk through our placement process this year.
Can you say a little more about the Year at Atlantis? What is that?
Sure. So what we did was we created, at the end of the year, based on the feedback we were getting about systems and structures. Audrey and I got together with Pam Piper, our math coordinator, and Chad Spelman, our literacy specialist, and created a monthly, well, let me see, a one-page document. It's really one page, front and back, with a week-by-week outline for staff. And for a typical, let's say, 2nd grade teacher, you'd have on the left side of the page, the week of, what's happening in general in that month? Like kneecaps are happening, or local assessments are happening. Collaborative planning time, what's happening in each of those collaborative planning times? And while we were making that document, we tried to be really thoughtful about, well, best practices is happening this week, so let's make collaborative planning time and put it aside for subplanning. So things that teachers have to do, we tried to make spaces for them to do it in a really intentional way, so that they could see that piece of paper and on one page, look through the year and see that, okay, there are places for me to get this worked on. So what we hope to do is go back to the drawing board with that document and make it even better. So we generated, the committee created staff morale boosters, and those come in a lot of different forms, but two of those are some surprise goodies. We had staff fill out questionnaires about their favorite goodies, their favorite cold beverages, hot beverages, treats, and just magically they appear from time to time. And then we have a Total Request Fridays, where staff in that same questionnaire identified their favorite song. And on Friday mornings, we play it over the intercom and send a special, a student helps us with that. Send a special dedication out to that teacher who, who chose the Total Request Friday song for that day. And they don't know when it's going to happen. So we're continuing to support staff participation in the Wellness Program, which is the PATH Program. And we've created and administered more streamlined survey tool to monitor staff wellness and morale. I don't know if any of you remember that climate survey, but it was, it was pretty involved. So the last thing we want to do is create more stress by creating this long survey for people to fill out. So we've created more of a streamlined, shorter, six or seven questions, kind of a dipstick approach to how folks are doing. It's just a picture of our kindergartners on the first day, their, their first day of eating lunch in the cafeteria. So Goal Area 3, CCS will feel welcoming and invited to all CCS families. And as I'm presenting this, it really should say families and visitors to, to people who arrive at our community. And we, we're happy to report a lot of things that we want to continue, and some of these are in our action plan, and some of these aren't in our action plan. And some of these are as a result of our newly revived, wonderful, energetic, positive PTO. So some things that we want to continue, we want to continue with principal coffees that Audrey and I, from time to time, offer. Support PTO's efforts to increase CCS family engagement. Continue with the Main Lobby Digital Display. And we're loading that display with images of basic, basically various school images and information. There's a new piece on there that's four or five slides on how to pack a waste-free lunch. Check it out if you haven't. Parent representation on the Coordinated School Health Committee, on the 4Rs Committee, on the Food Squad Committee, on the Diversity Committee. We're inviting parents to join their children for lunch. We are going to seek parent membership on the Climate Committee, which to this point we do not have. And a subcommittee's been created to make additional recommendations based on the Parent Welcoming Survey. And this is just, I don't intend to read through these, but I thought it would be good, we had a little brainstorm at a staff meeting where I said a little, few words to staff about, you know, we're going to be reporting out to the school board on school climate and on examples of opportunities for our students and adults to illustrate civic and social responsibilities. And let's just take a couple minutes to talk about it at our tables, and then let's just do a share-out. And they just kept coming. So someone, I just typed as people were, were yelling them out, and I just wanted to kind of summarize them on this page. There's a lot, a lot of examples there. That's it. Are there any questions? Adora?
I do have some on that. Well, first I started writing in the margins some of the things that are on here.
Yes.
But this is incredible. I mean, even without reading the words, just a number of things.
Believe it or not, there are things on the list that didn't make it to the slide.
Yeah. I do believe that. I just wanted to say that I think that aesthetic, I, what did you do to the cafeteria to make it aesthetically better? It definitely is, but I couldn't figure out what, what you did.
We painted it.
Yeah.
There were a lot of murals that were colorful, but pretty aged.
Oh.
So we basically gave the room a whitewash. We had those poles, those steel columns, that were peeling, that were really terribly peeling, so we put a new coat of paint on those. We now, the Food Squad and 4Rs Committee has used that blue wall as a, a learning wall, so we're looking to expand that even more. There's some, actually, there's a new display up that just went up about a week ago. And then we've just added some more colorful stuff on the back wall, too, by the waterfront, because that was pretty white. The feedback eventually, you know, originally was, it's too white now. There's nothing, there's nothing there. So we're trying to dress that up, but at least it looks cleaner. We did some minor repair work in terms of moldings and things like that over the summer as well.
It's really nice. I, I also went in there once to see if the composting setup needed help. And I expected to see some of the adult organizers there. There was no adult. The kids needed no help. They explained every question I had. It was amazing.
Yeah.
They were awesome. And then I wanted to know what the participation is for parents coming to lunch. I see, occasionally I see the invitation out there, but I don't know whether anyone's really doing it.
Good question. I couldn't, I couldn't give you a really hard number. The days I've popped in on, I've seen maybe three or four parents.
Okay. And it's now the elementary level.
I would say yes.
Before your kids prohibit you.
Right.
Don't even think about coming to the room.
So one, one last thing, I, I don't know if it's on here, but I just wanted to bring to mind that these PTO lunches, I think the PTO is organizing the grade-level lunches for the faculty, which is a really nice faculty wellness thing. And I happened to be here on a conference night, and people were quietly bringing in dinner for the teachers. So things like that are total, are invaluable. So I'm really appreciative of that.
Yeah. And that's been amazing. Staff has been extremely appreciative of that. There's another one coming up this week. Any other questions?
Good question. I don't know if this is the right context, this report, to address this question, but do we have a protocol or a method for welcoming and sort of engaging prospective families?
Good question. We have systemized that to some extent in that our school counselors now take the lead in offering, kind of being the ambassadors, and running the tours. So when, very often what happens is if a family is considering moving to Charlotte, or has moved here and is trying to decide what school to go to, they'll call the school, they'll call the office, they'll get Naomi or Jane. Naomi or Jane will facilitate, Naomi will facilitate an appointment with Kathy or Vicki. And then those are the people, most of the time, if available. If not, Naomi will do it, or Audrey or I will do it. Will, that will be ambassadors and walk them around the school and answer any particular questions they have. We, what we don't have is kind of a welcome packet, you know, and that's something that we're thinking about. But we've tried to be a little bit more consistent with the message that folks are getting and who it is that's delivering those tours.
And do we have a sense of how that compares to the neighboring communities, Schelber?
I don't have a sense.
Good question.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Sue.
Hi, Sue. We've seen this data before, the PBIS referrals, and I just wondered how this, how are we doing compared to previous years?
In, in general, the number of the Tier 1 and the Tier 2, we had, we had a four-year look at that. Basically, they take that triangle, and the triangle becomes a rectangle. They put four years of data there. And you see yellow and red shrinking slightly. So in the last four years, when I say slightly, I think it's a couple of percent. But the total number of referrals hasn't changed that much, which is interesting. But there are fewer students in that yellow and red category. You're welcome. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. And thanks to that whole committee. And are you going to be soliciting soon for, for community members, Greg?
For the committee, yes.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to share a report on the K-8 Configuration Committee. I'd like to give you a little background. In the spring of 2012, the board charged Greg and I to form a committee to look at our current configuration and look at our declining enrollment that we've been seeing in the past few years. So in the fall of 2012, a committee was formed. I'm the lead administrator on that committee. And we asked a bunch of constituents to be part of that. We've met since October to March. We had 10 meetings overall. And our committee members consist of myself and Greg. We have a few audience members who are part of the committee tonight. Tim Sampson was one of our parent representatives. Tim. Kathy Batty is our middle-level school counselor who represented our middle-level school counseling piece. Kim Servin served as our parent educator representative. We also have Rich Seacock, who was another parent representative. And Dave Beard was, is our 5th grade math and science teacher, was part of the committee. Let's see, who else? Jenny Cianciola represented expressive arts, and she's our music teacher. Sheriff Fadelberg represented the elementary constituency, and she's our 3rd, 4th, 5th grade, or 3/4th teacher. And Kristin Rathbun is our 7th and 8th grade science teacher. I think I have everyone. So tonight, I want to share our work that we've done for the past six months. So the committee spent the last six months analyzing current research on our K-8 programs. We started, studied our current delivery model, and we reviewed feedback from staff, parents, and students through surveys. We also created a mission statement, which was revised a little bit, that I want to share with you, was to develop configuration recommendations. It was to develop configuration recommendations to the school board for the next five years. Among other factors, recommendations reflect consideration of the needs of learners at all grade levels and projected enrollment changes. So that was our guiding mission statement. At the beginning of our committee, when we saw the next five years, looking at, we'd have to look at our projections for 2013-14, the committee did not feel comfortable making a configuration proposal because it was too soon. We didn't have enough data. So we revised our five-year timeframe from 2013-14 and beyond and starting with the next school year, 2014-15 for the five years of 2018 to 19. So when you're looking at the timeframe, it does not include next year for our configuration model. So the committee started with a comprehensive analysis of our current system. We developed overarching questions to guide our process, which took us a few meetings to get down. We developed a model of our current configuration since we had many members who really didn't understand what our current configuration looked like. And I think now I can say some of our parents and peer educator may understand that a little bit better, spending time to do that and look at what we currently are doing. We also discussed the history and background that formed the current model. And we had some teachers who were very helpful in that, since they've been here for many years. Really got understanding of what the history of how we've evolved to where we are today. And we also analyzed information about our future enrollment. So our analysis of Bill Smith, he provides us projections every year on our current enrollment that helps Greg and I decide how we're going to budget and staff for the next year. And based on our analysis of Bill's projections for 2013, enrollment projections for 2013 to 2018, we reveal the following. By 2018, CCS would expect an overall drop in K to eight student population to an estimated 368 students. We currently have, let me see, we currently have 421 kindergarten to eighth grade students today, as of this week. Yes.
How have his previous projections played out in terms of, if you looked at his five-year numbers, did reality kind of trend?
They actually do, and Greg can attest to that because he did not follow the projections what Bill had for the kindergarten going into first grade class. And he was right on. Bill was right on with that. So since our experience being here three years, he's been right on with enrollment. However, we have a disclaimer at the bottom to mention that because, you know, looking at the five years, the accuracy of his projections, we have to be careful with that. But the other analysis revealed that grade sizes are projected to hover over lower, in the lower 40s as opposed to our current average. We currently have about 50 in each grade level right now. The analysis that follows in this report is premised again on the accuracy of Bill Smith's projections, which in our three years we've been here have been pretty accurate. However, actual enrollment numbers may require modification to the recommendations contained herein because we can't, over the next five years, we're not sure if the trend will stay that way. So we just want to make that disclaimer now. So the committee worked to develop a future configuration by looking at research about different configuration models. We also developed surveys for staff, parents, current CCS students. And we also tapped into our graduating CCS students by soliciting ninth and 10th graders at CDU. And we critique several sample configuration models before we came up with the proposals tonight. Okay, what does the research say? Research is very limited and inconclusive. We found a lot on looping and middle-level models. There's very little on multi-age. In your last page of your document, there's some pop-ups of what we did talk about, what we did find as far as the research we did look at. Research does not make a strong recommendation for a specific system or program. And the common theme throughout all the research we did look at is that regardless of what model you're using, it's really important for administrators and staff to make sure we're meeting the specific needs of our adolescents or elementary students. And if you want more detail, again, you can look at the pop-ups we found with the research we did find. Okay, I want to start off with our staff survey results and share with you that we had 29 teachers respond to the survey. And I'm going to share just specific questions and pop-ups that we thought were important to our analysis. When staff was asked, how satisfied are you with our current configuration? 97% were satisfied or neutral, and only one responder was unsatisfied. And if you look at the actual graph here, this stands for the response K to eight. Three stood for neutral, four was satisfied, five stood for very satisfied, and two represents unsatisfied, and one would be very unsatisfied. And these were the number of people responding. When asked, what are the current challenges in our current configuration model? Staff identified two major constraints or pop-ups, and one had to do with scheduling constraints. Not enough planning time, a lack of common planning time to collaborate with other colleagues across grade levels or within grade levels. And also the feeling that there's no downtime for kids. Scheduling constraints dictate the order of child's play rather than pedagogical preferences. The other pop-out had to do with, or challenge was class size. There was a feeling or a concern across grade levels that many classes are too big. Class sizes are close to the math size so that one or two new students pushes it over the limit in the elementary level. And additionally, for class size, big variations in class size between grades is especially challenging.
Can you explain that, what that means?
I just think, they feel that, oh, let me go back. That because there's a variation in class size across grades, it's challenging to meet the needs.
That would be boring in one grade and boring in another.
When asked as a professional working in this building, what is your personal preferences in terms of configuration models? And 70% of staff prefers preferred opportunities to team with their colleagues. And 59% of staff who responded preferred looping models. And these are just some pop-up responses in regards to this question. It was an open-ended question to say, tell me more about your feelings for this. So basically, looping provides the best opportunities to build and maintain relationships with and between students and families. And these relationships are extremely important and educationally productive. Professional teaming is highly regarded at CCS. If multi-age models are expanded, it should be based about, it should be about philosophy and pedagogy as opposed to enrollment and class sizes. And content specialization and repeated opportunities to teach the same content over and over again allows for this depth of knowledge and expertise, and looping provides that. So these were just some comments teachers had made about looping and why they chose that.
What are the second and third bars?
Right here, this one?
Yeah.
So this stands just the different configurations. Looping with one teacher, multi-age, multi-grade, straight grade, teaming models, and departmentalization.
So what's the distinction you're making between multi-age and multi-grade?
So multi-age is one teacher teaching the same curriculum to students of different grades in one classroom. Multi-grade is one teacher teaching different curriculums to different grade levels in one classroom. And we use the model of multi-age at three-four right now. Another question? I forgot to mention that, now we're going on to parent surveys. There was 106 parent responses from the survey that we sent out and gave them about a month to respond to us. And this has to do with looping. When parents were asked for their preferred classroom configuration with respect to looping, 52% of parents preferred or strongly preferred looping. 30% were neutral to looping. And some of the pop-ups that parents made or statements they made about this. In general, parents prefer looping at the elementary level over all other models. Parents reported that their students benefited academically from being placed in a looping classroom. However, looping might allow less contact with all kids in a grade level over time because you have that two-year relationship within that class. Another question which we wanted to share with you tonight is when asked for their preferred classroom age or grade configuration, what we're really looking at, and I'll share with you here, whether you've preferred a single grade versus a multi-grade. So that was really the question you were answering, do I prefer a single grade versus multi-grade? 61% of parents preferred or strongly preferred single-grade classrooms, while 27% of parents felt neutral to the issue, on the issue, and 10% preferred multi-age classrooms. So some pop-ups from this. Basically, parents are saying, don't fix something that's not broken. We like the consistency of having the configuration and models that we have. So many parents are open to finding a configuration system that works best for students' learning, but parents support a program that remains consistent. An overall sentiment was to stop changing configuration, staffing, and programs so often. And another comment was, many parents voiced that when placement works well, all is fine. But parents felt they need to be heard more if they're in need of a change in a negative placement. Now we're going to switch over to, or move to our student survey. So the committee decided, let's look at graduating students of CCS. We decided to focus on ninth and 10th graders, thinking they would have more experience or remember their experience at CCS. And these are some pop-ups from their survey. Across the board, current ninth and 10th grade students at CDU said looping at CCS has been positive academically. They felt they were able to make strong connections with their teacher, and that allowed the teacher to work with their individual abilities. The majority of respondents felt that looping worked for them socially as well, although there were a few students who reported that looping prevented them from getting to know other kids in their grade. And we saw that in the parent survey. Parents were concerned that if you're in that same grade level, you may not have, build relationships with other kids in your class. So we did see that here. And overall, CDU students were not in favor of a multi-age classroom at CCS. But as a committee, when we talked about that, we don't have many multi-age classrooms. So many students probably didn't have a multi-age experience. So that's probably why that statement's there. We also decided to survey our current sixth through eighth graders. We had 117 responses, and here's some of their pop-ups. The majority of sixth to eighth grade students felt that looping had been a positive experience. 82% of students surveyed felt that their teachers at CCS know them well. 88% responded that they were able to make friends with kids from different classrooms. 99% responded that they had made good friends at CCS. And 86 responded that the class size at CCS are just the right size, according to them. So, let's see. Conclusions from doing our data analysis, pretty much research, though limited and inconclusive, doesn't contradict the priorities of looping and straight grades. And based on the information from our teachers, parents, and students, those are the models that they prefer. Surveys provide a clear feedback that looping and straight grades are preferred and multi-age classrooms are not preferred. But in looking at that statement, again, many parents probably have not experienced with multi-age since, I think, we've had, since I've been here, we've had multi-age at three-four and a first and second grade class my first year. So not many students may have experienced that. So across the board, with students, teachers, and parents, they may not have had that experience. Based on this information and the assumptions of projected enrollment, I'd like to present to you two models for configuration, projected configuration, that reflects a shift in terms of class size based on SQS. And I'll explain a little bit more about SQS. I know we have some new board members. I'm not sure if you're used to that term. So class size, the committee realizes that we're not charged and did not undertake an evaluation of what appropriate class size is or should be. We also realize and recognize that in general, smaller class sizes do benefit both students and teachers. But we also have to recognize that class size must be balanced by other factors. Since we did not have another baseline for which we can appropriate or determine what is appropriate class size, our recommendations and models are based on the Vermont Department of Education's School Quality Standards as a guideline, and SQS, that's where we get the term SQS, School Quality Standards for Class Size. And I'm going to share you the SQS for class size. At the elementary level, classes in grades K to three, when taken together, shall average fewer than 20 students per teacher. In grades four to eight, when taken together, classes shall average fewer than 25 students per teacher. So this is what we use as our guideline when looking at class sizes. And now Greg is going to share our proposed elementary configuration model for the next five years, starting 2014 and 15.
So this six-year look at elementary configuration, which we're considering kindergarten through fourth grade, basically supports the notion of if it's not broken, don't fix it. What you will see is, this is arranged by grade, kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade. Projection-wise, next year, we're looking at approximately 31 kindergartners to come in. That number is looking fairly accurate, considering the work that Naomi has done and the appointments we have for kindergarten registration, which is just a few weeks away. And then if you look straight down the kindergarten line here, you'll see numbers that range from 28 to 32. So that solidly supports two kindergarten teachers. And what's nice is it doesn't get us into that little bit iffy area of that 38, 39, 40, 41, 42 in kindergarten when you get up near 20 in a class for kindergarten. Moving over to first and second grade, and this is where the numbers get a little trickier. In general, we do have, typically historically, we have a bump from kindergarten to first grade. We have students that come out of the woodwork at Charlotte between kindergarten and first grade year. Right now, we have 35 kindergartners. We're expecting 40 first graders. We haven't found those four, five first graders. There could be more out there. There could be fewer out there. But what we're banking on is 40 or fewer, which indicates staffing of two teachers. Now, this year, we have three first-grade teachers. And just the board doesn't need a reminder, but just so everybody knows, that initially, we had two teachers in the budget. We had first graders come in over the summer. Six first graders joined us over the summer. We got to the number of 46. And I made a recommendation to the board to add a teacher, which the board approved. And we now have three first-grade teachers. So the recommendation included in this proposal is for those three teachers to continue on looping with their three first-grade classes into three second-grade classes. It should be noted at this point that one of those positions isn't currently funded based on the failed budget. So what you'll see here in third and fourth grade is our current model of 2.5 and 2.5. So that represents two third-grade classes, two fourth-grade classes, and the multi-age third, fourth. It's important to note that the multi-age third, fourth is in itself also a type of looping because every student who is in that classroom spends two years with a group of peers and with their teacher, with few exceptions. So I'm going to double back and just give the multi-year picture in two grade clusters. So if we look at first and second grade right now, and we take it beyond next year, you see this orange here. That indicates an expected reduction in staff. The way the numbers are looking, we're basically going from a 90-student team. When I say team, 90 students across first and second grade to 80 students across first and second grade. And that pretty much holds from that point forward, based on Bill Smith's projections. So starting in 14-15, this proposal expects a reduction in one teacher across the first and second grade. So that five-teacher team, if you will, becomes a four-teacher team for the rest of this proposal. There is no multi-age, multi-grade anymore at the first and second grade level. The third and fourth grade level, okay, indicates that the numbers around 90, and here it's 100, and here it's back down to about 95, hold. So regardless of the way the third and fourth grade teams set up, we project a need for five teachers across those two grades for the next three years. And then in the year 16-17, we see this dropping a teacher to two and two. So that, similar to what happened here, happens now here. Again, you'll notice these numbers, 42 and 43, are higher than those corresponding students were when they were back as first and second graders in kindergarten. So those are Bill Smith's projections. We don't know how they're played out. Would those be larger third and fourth grade classes than we're used to? Yes, at least in recent years. But at that point, I would propose that we would drop a teacher and have two classes of 21 and two classes of 21 and 22. And then that holds for the rest of this projection. What I don't plan on getting into too much detail tonight, but I want to make sure I share with you, is that this represents a maintaining of the three-four multi-age class. So there was a lot of conversation, a pretty involved journey that the third and fourth grade team and I and some other folks got involved with around what the third and fourth grade looks like over the next few years. And when it boiled down to, really, the numbers suggested that no matter what we do, we need five teachers to do it. So then what we did was we weighed the pros and cons of doing a skip jump with our loop and starting next year with a three-teacher third grade. So our current third graders wouldn't loop. wouldn't loop. There were three or four different scenarios, because we have a smaller third-grade group coming up. But what we ended at, after some pretty good conversation and after analysis of pros and cons for each one of those scenarios, we ended at maintaining the multi-age for the next three years. And I'll just give some of the pop-outs as to why. And what, the first, the big thing is that the looping piece is really highly valued here. It's highly valued by parents, students, teachers, and maintaining that multi-age allows us to maintain the loop we're in now and not break it up, not disrupt it. Any other of the configurations would cause us to unpack all the classes that we have now. It's sustainable for three years. In other words, we can maintain the setup and the teams and the multi-age for three years without disruption. It avoids significant curricular challenges. So, if a student is on a team one year, the social studies and science units are essentially planned out over two years. And the way the teams plan them, they plan to cover them in a two-year span. So, if you break the two-year span of the social studies and science without having backed up and planned it that way, and then you break up all the students and mix them up differently, the teachers are going to have to unpack all their instruction and figure out, how am I going to deliver my units, because I know those four kiddos got this unit, those seven didn't, and those three got neither. And it's, as I said, it's staff-neutral. The configuration here is staff-neutral. We would be looking at five teachers regardless over the next three years. Greg?
Yes? As far as the third, fourth goes, this year, coming here, we're expecting thirty-nine first graders?
Correct.
And the next year, that turns into fifty fourth graders?
Yeah.
No, next year...
No, for fourth grade?
The following year, when they, you know, are a year older, they're in fourth grade, it would be those thirty-nine kids plus eleven new kids?
That doesn't look right, Eric. I'm going to have to double-check that number, because that hundred does look high. That shouldn't really be a hundred. I'm going to have to double-check that number.
And can you...
Yes.
In the third and fourth grade, when we have the multi-age, do we have para-support in whichever classrooms are absorbing extra kids for math?
Yes.
We do. And will we need that once we get down to this? We won't need that para-support, right, once we get down to two thousand sixteen?
Probably not.
I mean, we might just, because the classes are a little big, but...
Two thousand sixteen, definitely not.
Okay.
We might not need the para-support next year for that math, because the other two classes are going to be relatively small. So, we'd be divvying up the math kiddos, splitting them up between the other two classes, and the numbers might not warrant para-support, but we still have to see how that plays out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, implications and notes, the recommended K-four configuration results in reductions in classroom teaching staff of one-point-oh FTE in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and additional one-point-oh FTE for the sixteen, seventeen school year. The looping model is maintained. Instruction occurs predominantly in straight-grade arrangements, meaning you're teaching one grade at a time, with the exception of the three, four, multi-age classroom through the two thousand fifteen and sixteen school year. And class sizes are maintained within desired CSSU and SQS limits. Pass it back to Audrey.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
So, for the middle-level configuration, the proposed model, the only difference between the models that Greg had for elementary is this column here, instructional groups. We don't have single teachers teaching the middle-level students. Just over here, this represents fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. We have enrollment projections, average class size, but we have instructional groups at the middle level, and I'll try to explain that to you. The students in middle level, they go through their day in instructional groups, and there's three, I'm going to use seventh grade as an example. There's three instructional groups on the main content areas. So, for example, there are three language arts and integrated social studies classes. There's three math classes and three science classes, as opposed to, and that gives you a class average size looking at next year of sixteen-point-three. If we go and look at fifth grade for instructional groups, we currently have, we have two sections of language arts, two sections of science, and two sections of social studies. And notice, when you have, you're moving in groups of two instructional groups, the class size is a little higher. So, in looking at this model, the proposal is, for two thousand fourteen and fifteen, is to move from three instructional groups to two instructional groups for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In doing that, we will have an average class size, which is in line with our CSSU class enrollment, our class size, as well as the SQS. And if you look overall, when we move to that in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, pretty much the numbers will hold. There's a few here, if you look at this trend here, we'll have a little lower in class size here, but overall, the numbers are within the low forties and high fifties, or mid-fifties and low fifties. There's a couple here, fifty-one and fifty-one here. And I would also just like to share the implications and notes for mine here. If we make this proposal, configuration for two thousand fourteen and fifteen, it would result in equivalent, an equivalent of two-point-oh reductions for the two thousand fourteen and fifteen school year. This would impact middle-level content teachers, and it's equivalent because it could be partial FTE reductions based on subject area, content area. Class sizes for sixth to eighth grade, as I mentioned, will be aligned with CSSU and SQS limits. Instruction will continue to occur in straight-grade arrangements, and the only caveat is that the two instructional groups may reduce the opportunities to mix students into different groups for different classes. And overall, just final considerations when looking at the two models that we presented tonight, if class size exceeds SQS and there's a higher needs for a specific class, we may want to request additional resources or support for that grade level. And I can share, in July of this year, or the summer of two thousand twelve, we did have a projected enrollment of twenty-seven to twenty-eight kids at sixth grade. And also, that particular group of kids were very needy literacy-wise, we had several kids on tier-two plans for literacy. I came to the board and requested that I wanted additional support, because the class size was going to be very large for those group of students, and the board decided to add a literacy, a part-time literacy teacher to help us meet those needs. So, in any of these mod, or any of these scenarios or years where we think we're going to have a higher class size that's higher than SQS and the needs of students warrant it, we would come back to you and ask you for some additional support. Another final consideration, staff reductions in expressive arts, where language and support staff would also occur at all grade levels for any year that we recommend a reduction. And this, again, report is based on enrollment projections provided by Bill Smith. We don't know what's going to happen, the trends over the next five years, so actual enrollment numbers may require modification to the recommendations we've made tonight. Just wanted to go back to the middle-level configuration and share with you that I feel comfortable that the recommendation or proposal to move to two instructional groups for two thousand fourteen and fifteen could be implemented next year, at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And does anyone have any questions? Eric?
Yeah, the staff reductions in expressive arts, language, and support, are those fractions of a person?
It'd be partials. We haven't looked at that yet to quantify them, but it would be partial pieces too, based on the number of sections we would need for art, PE, music.
We've already done that once, and we already did that last year, so we'd be doing it again.
We would be doing it again based on the classroom reductions.
Any other board questions? Any audience? Yes?
How do you think it would...
I think you just need to say your name for the ITN.
Jenny Oster. How do you think it will affect?
I think specific to math, as you get into the group of students in seventh, eighth, who were that tense, by that age, you have a bigger array of ability that you're teaching to. How do you think the going from three groups to two groups?
I think we'll be okay, and I can say that just because I know I have two teachers at fifth grade who are doing that model now. We're doing best practices in mathematics, which is helping with the differentiation. We're still working with our consultant, Bill Rich, on differentiate instruction, and we'll be able to meet the needs. I'm confident we'll be able to meet the needs, knowing I have a cohort already doing that and moving up.
Actually, I think that raises a question in my mind. If you're cutting a middle-level teacher, is that our math teacher that we lose?
It's possible. I'm not sure what the cuts would be. It's possible we have to look at licensure, assignments, and schedules to determine that. It's possible. I haven't gotten that to that level tonight, we're just presenting this model.
But I guess when they're rubbing me through it, I mean, do we have, I mean, if it comes down to seniority and if it's a math teacher that you lose, do you have the ability to still deliver that program with the remaining staff?
Well, that's part of the determination of who gets cut. We have to provide the program that we need to provide.
Okay, so it's not just seniority?
And that gets factored in, exactly.
Any other questions? Tim?
My name's Tim Sampson, and I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a first grader and was a member of the committee. And I think that Audrey did a great job of explaining what went into it, but I think for the board's benefit, I'd like to summarize or maybe just kind of emphasize, the bulk of the work was really on the front half of the presentation and the evaluation, the outreach as to really configuration things such as looping versus straight grade and this sort of thing. There wasn't a recommendation of the committee, in my opinion, as to staffing recommendations for the coming years. And I think you take the report and you can conclude that the way the school is operating in terms of, you know, its looping, in terms of primarily straight grades, is consistent with the feedback that we received from all those, as Audrey said, all those we reached out to. The application of, or the, I think the ultimate recommendation with respect to staffing is, despite all that goes into it, a fairly simple mathematical formula. We're taking an input, which is Bill Smith's projections, which may be right and they may be wildly wrong. We don't know that. And we're applying that to an average class size that is presented in the SQS. And that average class size is reflected, I believe, as a maximum. And so, there is a value judgment going on that the board has to realize they're making if it's going to adopt this recommendation, and that is to go from a situation where you have smaller class sizes than this standard's maximum, to one that bumps up against the maximum of the standard. And I think you need to keep that in mind in light of these broader conversations that are going on, where the school seems to be strapped with the most limited, the minimum resources to get by on a budget size and the maximum class size. It's getting squeezed in all directions, and I think that would, I just wanted to be clear about what the bulk of the committee's effort went into. The rest, which follows, I think, is a fairly straight application of those standards, but you have to, again, you have to accept that SQS is going to be the number that you use to make your value judgment about what the class sizes ought to be at the school. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw some other people.
Hi, my name is Andrew Swayze. I just had a quick question, Audrey. As you go to the, you mentioned there were three different sort of areas, once you get to the middle-level configuration, but now two teachers. Does that mean that there's, teachers are doing multiple subject areas? Or are you just reducing the number of teachers and they're working with different classes?
Basically, it's based on licensure and their assignment, so if a teacher has a licensure... For example, right now, we currently have a teacher, a seventh, an eighth-grade teacher who teaches science and math, so that could happen. Our language arts, our seventh and eighth-grade language arts teachers also teach social studies, but they do it integrated, so we'd have to look at that. So, it could be, you may have one teacher who's teaching science and social studies based on their licensure pieces. That helps you understand that a bit more. So, they could be doing two subject areas. Go ahead, then I'll go to the key.
I'm wondering how those numbers compare.
Can you just say your name, Daryl?
Daniel, Ben, six.
I'm wondering how the numbers compare to other schools in the district.
I can share that with you. As far as the middle level, looking at most of the schools, the average class size from fifth to eighth grade is eighteen to twenty-eight. Now, I can give you specifics. Shelburne is eighteen to twenty-six. Williston is twenty-two to twenty-six, and Heinsberg is twenty-two to twenty-eight. So, we're well below the CSSU class size average. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kim Servin. I was also on the committee, and I just want to piggyback on what Tim said in terms of, once we got to the point where we were having to look at these spreadsheets and realizing the degree to which this was really, truly a numbers game, a number of us were very uncomfortable with the discussion of class size and sort of determining what our priority is as a school on class size. So, I just want to be wary of using the term "recommendation" as a committee, because I don't know that as a group, we would all necessarily recommend class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-five. That being said, budget constraints and everything else, you know, we could adopt the SQS, and numbers show that they do, but I just sort of want to put that caveat out there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sue. Going back to the staff survey, which is earlier in the presentation, the biggest pullouts that you listed were the scheduling constraints and the class size. And these recommendations don't help either one of those concerns, they aggravate those concerns. The scheduling constraints will be even more challenging if we cut down the amount of time that the teachers have, they've got quite, you know, more work to do, more classes to teach, so they have less time to, so scheduling concerns, and class sizes are going the opposite direction of where they were hoping they would be going. So, it seems to be a little bit contradictory. This one page says we need more scheduling time and collaboration and less class sizes, and then the recommendation is to push them in the opposite direction. Is this, this configuration, is it embraced by the staff? Are they saying, yeah, let's go for it? The fifth-grade teachers did a great job with consolidating their team, but it's very different in the seventh and eighth, I have found, with how things are, the scheduling and the content areas and such.
I can, as far as the planning time, common planning time, I would try to address that with scheduling, knowing that this came up as a concern and trying to look at that when we're looking at, if we make this recommendation to do that, I would try to look at building a more common planning time for the middle level. They don't have that right now in some cases. As far as the class size piece, I think that was more at the elementary level, and I think, as far as class size, it's the elementary level piece. So, I think Greg is trying to look at that with the model he's, or we're proposing for that piece. But yes, we'd have to look at those. It could be seen as contradictory, but I do believe we can address some of the pieces with scheduling.
And my second question was about the looping. Does the seventh and eighth model, with the two teachers for seventh, two teachers for eighth, would they be looping? Would the math teacher teach math for seventh and eighth grade, or, you know, how, did you look about how?
I haven't gotten that far, because it's really based on, now we have to look at licensure, assignments, and scheduling pieces too. But that is one piece we could look at. It may be that we have one teacher doing math across seventh and eighth grade. But again, I have some teachers who have cross-certification, so they also have science and math. We have a couple of teachers, so we'd have to look at that. That gets into the nitty-gritty piece of it.
Right, but you're confident, your recommendation was to move forward with this, and you're confident that you have enough teachers that can cover the...
Yes. I've already met with the HR director to go over this.
Right, interesting. I have to say, you probably know, I'm concerned about these class sizes being so large for the sixth, seventh, and eighth, and even for the elementary kids as well, but we're pushing the limit, I think, and it's uncomfortable. I think we heard it from the committee as well, so that's my two cents.
Got just two points. I just want to go back to Eric's question around that number. Eric, I have a better number for you. If you want to turn to that page, sure. That was an error. Forgive me for that. In the fourth grade, year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, that should be forty-two instead of fifty. And then I just want to just comment on something you said, Sue, about concerns around scheduling constraints. And of course, the work hasn't happened yet to create, but you wouldn't necessarily have more scheduling restraints, because you have fewer groups moving through the schedule. So, yes, you'll have fewer staff to meet the needs of fewer groups, but you're trying to create a schedule for fewer groups that move through that schedule. So, you wouldn't necessarily automatically have a tighter schedule.
And that may help with common planning time at the middle level, because there's more time there to do that. So, that's a plus of this. Any other questions? Yes?
Another question about the numbers. When you were thinking about moving from three to two, did you consider the first triangle we saw with behaviors? And knowing these seven students who are at the very top are moving into seventh grade or moving into sixth grade, and how that might affect the configuration if you have a class size of twenty-four and there's some heavy hitters there in terms of behaviors? How is that going to be managed in the classroom?
I didn't look at from perspective of behavior, I did look at as needs of students for instructional pieces as far as math and literacy. I didn't look at perspective behavior. I did look at as needs of students for instructional pieces as far as math and literacy. But we, we would take that into consideration and we do for placement of students. Does anyone else have a question? Yes?
Mary, I just want to piggyback on the behavioral thing, because I think it's such a big and important piece of this. Because the other aspect of it is that if you had three classrooms to divide up behavioral difficulty, children, children who have behavioral difficulties, as opposed to two classrooms, now there's less places to go. And so how do you kind of plan to tackle that with those teachers? You know, I think the, the biggest concern personally that I have is that, you know, I think we're asking our teachers more and more to become social workers, disciplinarians, and teach, and lots of things. And so, you know, I just have a concern that, that, that it's a lot to handle if you have a few kids that can be disruptive of the entire class.
And that was one of the pieces of the implications, that moving to two groups versus three groups, you have less options. So if there is a, a negative behavior or relationship between two students, you only have one other classroom to go to versus three. And that was discussed about, we discussed it as a, as a team or as a committee. That's just one of the cons of this model.
Right, but is there an action plan for, okay, so, or can we think through perhaps an action plan for, does that mean there needs to be more support for Mr. Dina Cola? Or does there need to be a place where they can go so shut down, so it's disruptive to the whole class?
Sure, so one of the final considerations to make when looking at this, if class size exceeds SQS and there are higher needs with a specific class, I'm making a recommendation of Greg or I would wanting some para support or some type of other resources to help leverage that higher, or the needs of that group. So, and the example was our sixth grade, current sixth grade class had a need for literacy. We actually ended up hiring a teacher versus a para. So that's one of the big things. Based on the higher class size and the needs of the students, we have to look at that closely. So we would address that.
I guess adding on to that, if the, if third through fifth grade boys were the sort of heavy hitters, do they typically all get it together by sixth grade? Or is that just that group's going to keep going up and be in trouble?
Well, there, there's another factor there, which is that a number of these behaviors happened on the bus and playground. So the number of classrooms involved is not going to affect those figures necessarily. And, and we also have an asterisk there, so there's, we know it's a smaller number of kids who have strong behaviors. And there's a lot of problem solving that would go around that. I mean, every day, so I don't think it's endemic to the classroom structure that, or the configuration necessarily that this problem is arriving.
Seth?
Yeah, I work with boys all the time. And what I've found, the nature is, the more high-spirited they are and the more they question authority, there's something there that's a good thing, that perhaps, I know it's a drag because it doesn't fit into the models of educational, and we have this, we have that group and whatever. But when I was a little boy, the teachers got to know you. And for me, it was Marx Brothers. I loved the Marx Brothers, and that's how they vented it. The point of getting at is labeling a person as being a behavioral issue where there may be something else there that needs to be addressed in a positive way, inspiration perhaps. You know, I know that the way the work, the configuration, as we call it, works, every second is taken away from something else. It means we have to get this in that place and all this stuff. And we, we're missing a lot of, let me put it plainly. I had teachers who inspired me, and I'll never forget them. And I still call them every now and then, just to say hi. It's not a behavioral thing, it's a caring thing. I've had boys, I worked with the scouts, and I have boys that some were incredible, I guess you call them, behavioral problems, you know, and we addressed it a different way. And I discovered who they were, and they discovered who they were, and they're doing so much better now. Is there perhaps a different approach than Mr. Dina Cola? You know, I mean, there's that, you know, you did bad, you got to go there. Do you know, you know, see what I'm getting at? I mean, I come from a different generation of labeling ADD, ADHD, DDD, DDD, DDD. I came from where boys were always more rambunctious than girls, you know, and this is the way it was in school. Is there a way of approaching it from a different approach rather than from a psychological approach? More of a humanity approach? Does anyone there old enough to understand what I'm saying?
We won't admit it.
No, but you, you, do you know what I'm getting at?
I wish you had been here earlier when Greg did the presentation on the
School climate.
School climate. And he addressed many of those things and some of the work that the school is doing. Because I think you would have been impressed and you would have heard many of the concepts that you're talking about, how they're actualized here.
I was making trouble at another meeting, that's why I'm here.
You, you, I'm sure you can get a copy of the
We have copies of it, yeah.
Yeah, but it was a good presentation, as long as this last presentation, in fact.
Thanks lots.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Five point oh, five point one, principals report. Greg and Audrey, did you want to do a summary or just want questions?
I think it's just something I did for gender study. Is there any questions to the board on the updates to gender study committee?
I have one. I was wondering on the, one of the bullets is that teaching students use planners and monitoring regularly. Do you know what that means?
That we're, we have, in some cases, for some students, we're teaching them how to use their planner step by step and then monitoring. We have some support people helping them.
Oh, so they're monitoring, you're not monitoring how the teachers are.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that.
Does anyone else have a question, some principals report? Five point two, facilities update. And I need to apologize because I told Mark I would go to the first meeting with him, and I got the wrong time.
The consultants came in and gave us a presentation on possible renovations of, of the building area. They'll be coming back with greater detail in their May meeting, so we're sort of kind of stalled.
Great, thank you. And five point three, CSSU debrief legislative update. I don't even, I have to say, I don't even remember what the legislative update was. I'm sorry.
The legislative update, it's not any, it's not a lot new. There's some things around. I don't think we discussed it.
I don't think we discussed legislative update.
I don't think we did. And I don't think that there's a whole lot new on the horizon. I think that the things that are kind of moving in the legislature are around flexible pathways, around dual enrollment, which is part of the flexible pathways, around providing lunch for all kids. So they're trying to, they're working on legislation that would provide, reduce lunch. Students would get free lunch. What else? There's the whole piece around providing the opportunity for the childcare providers to unionize, which is a big issue that some of your colleagues have testified against.
And it's not a common topic because that board was reorganizing itself, so there's not that much to report out. All right, moving right along. Six point oh, discussion matters. Six point one, policy review. And given that we have budget further down on our agenda, I don't know if we want to go through these one by one or if people had specific things that they wanted to ask questions about or offer suggestions about. How do people want to go? Should we go one by one?
I read through them, and I don't have any particular questions. I mean, they seem to be, you know.
The recommended changes were, yeah. I think the only, at the CSSU board meeting, some of the other boards had questioned some of the language, administration versus superintendent and things like that. So I think that'll still get ironed out tomorrow morning. But I don't think anything else jumped out at that meeting about the policies. Six point two, communications boards corner. I almost feel like maybe we should do that after, maybe we should circle back to that. I, I did email the Charlotte news today. You typically, their deadlines are on Thursday. So I did email him about that. I haven't heard back yet.
It is Thursday.
Thursday. So for the April fourth, it would have to be in by March twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it's there by Saturday.
Oh, by Saturday, okay. That's good to know. All right. So maybe we can talk about what we want to, what, if anything, we want to submit in the news after we decide if we're doing anything about the budget or not. All right, six point three, the budget. And Mark and Eric, I feel like I was in the same position as you, my very first board meeting. We had a failed budget and then sort of, you're so in the spotlight about this. So part, we have a partial budget since part A passed by ninety votes. Part B failed by twenty-five votes. Part B, and I think I have this right, was two hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And we needed both part A and part B to pass in order to open Charlotte Central School in the fall, having the same programs and staffing that we have presently. Since that time, we've learned that we have, our, our increase in healthcare is less than was projected in January when we finalized the budget. And I think Elaine, you said today, it's about
It's final now, it's ten percent.
And so that's twenty-two?
It's a little more than twenty-two because we were
Twenty-seven thousand.
How much?
Thank you, Lynn.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
The twenty-two was based on ten point seven, which was the most recent prior to just this last week. It's fixed now, though. It's at ten percent.
So I, I guess, I don't know how the board wants to proceed. As we put in the, in the newspaper article, we can decide to do nothing and just go with the part A of the budget. And if we do that, we can ask
Could I just say something about that? You don't want to do that. If you went right, here's why you wouldn't want to do that. Even if you, if everybody here said, oh, no, we believe we have the votes. If you go with the exact same budget, there is a funny provision in statute around part B that says then you need to get a super majority of the vote.
I would say, no, we could just stick with part A. We could say, oh, you could stick with part A. Two eighty-nine less, and then we have two choices.
She's not recommending this. She's just saying what the options are. What are our options?
No, no, I don't, I'm definitely not recommending that. But then we have the option of asking the administration just to, you figure out what you're cutting? Or we can ask for guidelines and then the board could make a choice. And our other option is to go back to the voters. And I guess not with the same amount.
Right, somewhat different.
But some different amount. And it could be higher. That would be an unlikely choice, I suppose. Or it could be lower. And given that we have a twenty-seven thousand dollar savings in healthcare, that would seem to be an easy way to reduce. So we need to discuss as a board if we want to go back to the voters and request additional funds. And if so, you know, we'll have to start to figure out what kind of number that is and what our timeline would be in doing that.
Well, we have a deadline, is that right? We have to have whatever we're going to have in place by June first, is that?
Yes. So Elaine can explain.
Actually, it doesn't have to be by June first, but you want to give yourself enough time so that you can go back if this isn't a past budget. By June thirtieth, and I think that you could even go back after June thirtieth. You could keep going back. It's just the state's going to put in some provisions at some point that says, how much money can you borrow in anticipation? As far as they're concerned, unless, until you pass this next part of the budget, you have the budget you have.
Sure.
They consider that you have a budget.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we be gluttons for punishment. I'm not sure we're going to go back four or five times, but
Exactly. So you want to be really smart about going back the first time.
We want to be really smart and we want to be pretty timely about it.
Right.
We don't want to drag our feet because So, so the information from Elaine is, we'll have to warn a public meeting.
You have to first have, hold a meeting, you have to have a budget meeting where you would decide what it is, take input from people and decide what it is that you want to move forward with. Hold a very quick meeting after that to vote on that budget that you're going to put forward. And from that, then you have to warn a public information meeting that's at least five days after the day you accepted you, the budget you're going to put forward. And you can hold a revote seven days after that. So if you were going to plug in numbers, just to give you an idea, if you were to hold a budget meeting, let's say next week, and let's just say, just to make it up, on the twenty-sixth, which is next Monday, you could have a
Next Tuesday.
Oh, next Tuesday. The twenty-sixth is Tuesday. You could have a vote of the board, let's say, next Thursday. You could have a public information meeting, putting in all those timeframes, April second, and you could have a vote on April ninth. That is the, pretty much the quickest that you could turn it around.
And realistically, you know, to go that quick or less so, it would make sense for us to try to get, if, if we decide to go ahead with this, to get that in before we close for the break.
Mm-hmm, right.
Right.
Right. But to have a seven-day gap from when we have the public budget meeting to the vote seems to me to be too short. If, if part of our, if part of our analysis is that one of the reasons the budget failed is because of communication. And we need to give ourselves some time to communicate.
So you could go
Push this out to the sixteenth, and then it's still before
There's some other dates that might have to move.
The one thing we, we need to, we think it's probably important to keep the vote on a Tuesday because that's when people expect
Those seven, the seven days there, Adora, are fixed. You have to, at the point that you have your public information meeting, the vote, the vote has to happen within seven days.
Oh, so maybe it's the gap before that.
It's the gap before that that you care about.
So are we tonight, we're talking about, are we talking about numbers or are we just talking about the process we want to follow?
I think you're talking about the process.
Okay. Well, I, and I, I think we have to talk about numbers too. Because we need to get information to central office if, you know, to run those numbers. If you're cutting staff, what does that, what does that number look like? If you're, you know, any of the things you're doing, you need to get a hard number. So we need to come up with some questions about numbers? Yes. So we need, and we need a ballpark about, you know, well, just to litmus test to begin with, do people want to go back to the voters for a new part B?
I'm personally in favor of going back. We can talk about the number. But going back, I think it's optimal. And given the state of what we've been told, I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, I think it'd be very, very hard to come up with cuts of that magnitude.
I think Clyde, we know that you would not like us to come back. And Adora?
Yeah, I think we need to go back with a smaller number, some kind of compromised number.
Okay. I do as well. Seth?
That's right. Yeah, my recommendation to proceed first, no one can hear you. You have these very expensive microphones, and I can't hear a word your guys are saying. And I'm sure they're important and they're real well thought out. This is what my recommendation is.
We just need to talk louder. We'll talk louder, sorry.
We'll talk louder, sorry.
Okay, it's me, it's probably I'm getting old or something. There are programs, there's things that can be reworked, rather than in front of like all these people, because everybody will, if you have 100 people in the room, you're gonna have 100 different opinions. You roll up your sleeves, like the math program, you know, different fancy programs, rather than, you know, getting back and see where you can, just without jeopardizing an education, and then come back, because if it looks like you've actually done your, you know, this is the bare bones, then I think the voters will stand behind you. I would, and I'll tell everybody that I know.
In my opinion, we're really bare bones right now with Part A and Part B together.
Well, I don't, I think that-
And I think at all the public information meetings that Lynn put on, leading up to the budget that failed, I, I think it was really clearly laid out, and perhaps that didn't get to the community. I don't know how we get it better to the community, and that's something we need to, to talk about, because the information was definitely there and available in a, in a bunch of forms showing that. We don't have a fund balance, we don't have any cushion left as we keep cutting and cutting and cutting this budget. So for us to go back and look at programs, I, every single line item, in my opinion, has been looked at, you know, 100 times to make sure, do we really need this to give our kids a quality education without it costing too much? That's my opinion, but, and we do have to do this work here, we can't go and do this behind closed doors because then we're violating open meeting laws, so we, it's sort of, we need to parse this out, you know, right now or at some other public meeting. Danny?
Clyde, can you, just because I was a budget buddy through the whole process and never really understood or heard you clearly say your opinion, which had varied from everybody else's in a meeting, which was troubling when I read it in the paper ultimately, when we have all these public meetings where it is the forum to discuss it and where I'd like to hear your opinion, not in the paper, but as part of this group discussion. And so when you say, when Kristen said that you would not like to revote Part B, could you explain that?
If you listen to the presentations that were given this evening, what's in this budget that does not need to be in this budget are two instructors, an administrator, possibly a couple of other odds and ends, but that's certainly, depending on a couple of things, close to the amount that constitutes the second vote. So when you hear the phrase, "Open the doors and provide the same programs," that's not true. We would not be eliminating programs. We'd certainly be eliminating personnel and would have to have a look at how we can streamline some operations, but the amount of money in the second vote is not necessary to provide the level of quality that you folks would like to see. As an aside, there's a little bit of a gray area here, because if the budget had failed altogether, the statute is you've got until June 30th and then you can start borrowing money up to 87% of the previous year's budget. And there's no statement in there about how long that can go on, and there's no provision in statute for our situation, which is, as Elaine says, we have a budget. So there's really no answer to, there's not a concrete legal answer to how we would deal with the second part of that budget, so that's kind of gray, but my point is, we don't need that second part of the budget.
Ken?
Can you elaborate on that, because if the number's $272,000, and I guess that's reduced by 27, and, and what Audrey presented was the potential for moving up next year's recommended cut of two teachers to this year, how does that close that gap?
Well, the amount of money we're asking for is two what?
Two-eight-seven, two-eight-nine something.
Two-eight-nine, seven-sixty-eight.
So if you eliminate from that the cost of two faculty members and one or the other of the administrators, that's going to add up to more or less that amount of money.
Well, is it more or less? Because if you, if it's more or-
Well, it would depend, for example, on which administrator you didn't replace, because those are not exactly the same, so, you know, everybody from here over, by and large, is the educational establishment, and they're not gonna do that anyway, so there's not a lot of point spending a lot of time, in my opinion, but if you were going to go that route, then you would examine what those specific numbers would be, and then you'd have a specific number, if any, that was needed for a second, for a revote on Part B.
Yeah, I find that incredible, it's that, that, that you couldn't, you're clear that it's not worth voting again, but you haven't really a clue on what that gap is. I, I just, that's very interesting.
And I guess I would continue on that. The, I think that it, it muddles the communication, that even if there are contrary views on the board, I, I'd rather have that put out there in a discussion than in the paper, because I do think that confused people in the, in the town somewhat, that you have the board coming out with different statements and then a letter to the editor for a member of the board that, that is, you know, I, I think the communication of it is, is important and it confuses people, it makes people think that that second amount was a slouch fund, whereas, you know, I think some of that is, was a lost opportunity, to not have that communication part of the many meetings we were all part of.
I don't really see your point, because what's, if you've been listening, what's going to happen here is the four or the five think that we need to go back for a revote and ask for what is going to be the bulk of that money, which is what's going to happen. So what will happen down the road is whoever is writing for the board, the majority of the board will present that to the town in a variety of ways, and if I have a difference of opinion, I'll present that. But there's, as you can see, there's not a lot of point in providing that to these folks in detail, because it just isn't necessary.
It gets in the, it gets in the meeting minutes. It's the purpose of being on the board.
I'd sort of take a little exception with that, being new to the board, I would welcome some discussion and the ability to learn from people with more experience and who were involved in this budget the first go-around, to get into some of the nitty-gritty and find out where we can make some changes. I mean, I think when you frame the question, is what do we want to do with Part B of the budget, and this gets to the communication that, that number doesn't pertain to anything in specific other than just the leftover bit of a formula that the state uses to calculate how you present the vote. It's not a specific number tied to a specific program or, or part of our curriculum, so it's, it's hard to, I think, might have been perceived by a lot of voters, is above and beyond what was the base line that was necessary. So I have no problem going back if we decide we need to go back to ask for a different amount, because I don't think there's anything magical about that 289 number. What I do think is important is how it's presented and how it's communicated. You know, I think we need to, as a board, understand what the concerns were of the voters, so we can address those issues and perhaps make, you know, our best faith effort to, you know, look at our situation and, and see if we can take some of those recommendations to heart as far as what the will of the voters is. So if there's a particular issue with where we're spending money that, that is sticking in people's throes and, and they feel like we haven't given it due consideration, we should give it due consideration, but I don't, I don't like the idea of throwing up our hands before we've even had a discussion and deciding that we can't agree.
Are you, Eric, when you talk about finding out the will of the voters and the thinking of the voters, do you think that amongst the, amongst the people here, we can figure that out, or do you think we need to go out and solicit more information from the voters? And if so, how might we do that?
Well, I mean, I have a totally unscientific, un, you know, representative sample of just the people that I've talked to.
Mm-hmm. And which we all probably have.
Each of us have, have formed our own impressions, and I wonder if they might be similar in terms of what the concerns were.
Should we talk about that?
Sure.
Want to start with yours?
Yeah, I think, from what I've heard, talking to different people, the administrative two principal thing is an issue, and that may be as simple as people not, you know, being fully informed on what the alternatives are, what the costs are, what, you know, other schools are doing versus our school. But on the face of it, it strikes people as something that isn't directly related to the kids.
Well, I'll pick that right up, because I think we've all heard that at some point. And whether we have to do a better job of educating people on the necessity of having two principals, or take a closer look at that, that's something we need to talk about, because that's a concern of the community. And two, the other thing I've heard is the cost of what we spend on the Bridges Math Program and how that gets fed into the school, and truthfully, I, that's something I'm not fully versed on, I'm not fully versed on either, but that one, much less so.
So concern, concerns I heard, I mean, the majority of people I've spoken with supported the budget, so I'll say this is a very small number of people now that I'm talking about presenting concerns. I heard the concern that the school budget is too big a part of our tax burden and that relative to what we pay for the town functions, we have the wrong ratio there, so that was a very generalized concern with regard to our budget. I also heard a concern that, well, I've, I have heard concern that teacher salaries are too high. Whether or not the, the people who present that point of view understand that, you know, we can't control that in this year's budget or not, that remains a concern of a certain number of people. Those are the two things that I've heard the most. I haven't heard lately the two principal concern, so I heard it when it was first created, but, yeah, a town, town meeting, yeah. So, one second, so, how do you think we should move from this? Should we talk about what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna address this concern and then communicate it out? Like from, personally, the two administrators, everything I read and everything I've been told, it, it makes its good value for us to have two administrators, that next to teachers, your school leadership is the most important thing. Our administrative structure is not out of line with other schools, and some schools, they call them different things. You have a dean of, I don't-
House directors.
A house directors and all sorts of other things, but it is something that comes up, even at the school meeting on town, on Town Meeting Day. But that's something I'm really prepared to, to fight, to retain. I think our school is in such a good place right now because we have strong leadership. And I actually looked, I started, I tried to look at the ratio of school to town budgets, and I don't think even with that, we're very much different than- Than other towns. Than other towns. I mean, I, if you compare yourself to Burlington or something, I mean, we're helping pay for kids to go to school in Burlington by spending our money there. But I don't, where, how do you guys see this, us proceeding with this information? Should we come to some conclusions, or what do you think?
Well, from what Lynn said, we have to have a full budget meeting next week or sometime in the next week or two.
We need to schedule.
We need to do some fact gathering between now and then about whatever particular interests are, we're showing here, Clyde, Eric, everyone, and, I mean, I know what I've been told and what I believe, that Part B is necessary to run the school, minus $27,000 currently. Let's make sure that we're telling everybody the right thing.
So what other information do people feel they need in advance of making a decision? Is there things we need from central office or from Greg and Audrey to help inform? You know, if people aren't prepared to say, "Let's just do this number or that number tonight," then what do we need to get to that next step? Well, we need to know what the, I mean, if we reduce the middle school teacher number by a position, how much is that? How much does that save us? And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Audrey, is, if, the reduction you, you would propose is two rather than one, if there's a reduction made next year as opposed to the year after, is that correct?
I mean, two rather than one. I'm, I'm recommending, or just sharing with you, I'm just saying that the model could be implemented next year versus waiting two years.
Next year meaning, school year 2013.
Correct.
Right.
The reduction of two teachers would be if you, equivalent of 2.0 FTEs.
Okay. One at the elementary and one at the middle.
No.
Oh, I misunderstood something.
It would be two, equivalent of 2.0 FTEs at the middle level content area.
So it goes from, so this year, three, six, nine, 11 would go down to-
That wasn't three.
Oh.
But those are instructional groups.
I'm sorry, those are instructional groups, right. So you're losing-
Right, they're not the same, the grids aren't figured the same way. Yeah, he's got staff, I'm moving kids in middle level through instructional groups.
Okay, so you got two groups and that would be a reduction of two teachers?
Equivalent of 2.0 FTEs, it could be partial, I see.
That, that wouldn't include-
Expressive arts.
The resulting partial reductions in expressive arts, so if you're teaching, if you're reducing the number of sections-
Right.
That reduces the number of PE classes needing to be taught.
Art, world language.
We need all those numbers.
We would need to do all that math. The other piece is that we have to keep in mind that there's a, included in this proposal is a teacher that's not funded currently.
Right.
For, to the $269,000, that's the third second grade teacher.
Right.
So is that 69,000, was that part of the-
That's part of the 289.
Right.
Because that one looks pretty straightforward, like, just from the presentation, I mean, that seems like-
No, because that first, she's a first grade teacher this year, for 2013, 14, she'd be a second grade.
If I could just have a-
Teacher. Um, do we want to keep figuring out what we want before we-
This is just a classification, that, that number-
May I?
Sure.
That number is not specifically a person, that, that, the Part B is just money. You can't really decide what that means. You could still have a first grade teacher, but not 200,000 of something else, so it's not that one teacher, it's just a number.
All right, Ken?
Doesn't it make sense to, to consider how you present, if you're gonna go back to the voters, doesn't it make sense to present to them, "This is what you're voting for," so that they can understand what you don't have if you don't approve it? I mean, in other words, a 272 or 89 or whatever it is, thousand represents whatever it's gonna be, and if it doesn't pass, this is what voter you're looking at. And that way, it's, it's harder for Mr. Baldwin to hide behind the fact that you can just wave your hands and say, "There's a bunch of excess stuff going on out there and nobody knows where it is." Let's put, make it concrete and explain what happens if, if the second vote doesn't pass.
Yes, go ahead.
Monica Marshall, um, sorry, no, that's okay. My, I've come to a lot of these meetings and, and I'm really kind of concerned that you're jumping automatically to cutting a teacher. And I know, Kristen, that you said, "Oh, we're bare bones." Well, you know what, I mean, really, can't you look at the other areas of the school? I mean, buses, which somebody else is gonna bring up. There's just, I, I, I'm really concerned that, that the first thought is, "Okay, we gotta cut a teacher," and I bet you- And I bet you here, every single solitary person here is thinking, oh, God, no. So to jump from going to that who, it just scares me. And the other question I had was, you all commented on who, what group you spoke to. And based on what the responses were, I would say a majority of who you guys talked to were people that are parents. And that's not who you need to be concerned about. And Clyde Baldwin is the only one that does not have any children here. And I think the four of you need to go out and talk to people that have no children here because they're the ones that are voting no. And they're the ones that are just looking at the number as a number and as a tax increase. And they're not going to care what is involved in that number. They're looking, they're, yeah, they're still angry that the teachers got a salary hike. They're still angry that there's two administrators. They're still angry now that their taxes are going up. And until that number is gone, you're not going to get that budget passed unless you talk to them. And Tim, it's going to be very hard to say two seventy-five is this teacher, this teacher, this teacher, this teacher. They're not going to care because they're going to say, okay, well, you can pay that teacher, that teacher, that teacher out of this budget, take it out of somewhere else. So I think you really need to talk to them and say, okay, people, you know, what, what is it that you want from us? What can we do to, to keep our teachers, what do you want to see taken out?
Just respond to that. You know, the feedback I got, negative feedback about the administrators, and I didn't mention it before, but I'll mention it now, the addition came from non-parents.
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
The, the, I did talk to a lot of people who don't have kids in the school and they were the ones who were upset about the, what they perceived to be sort of top-heavy administration. And they still also are not too pleased about the, what they sensed was in addition to the school, which, you know, costs money and a bonding issue that in their minds has not gone as much to classrooms they would have liked versus administrative or whatever other use of the space. And again, I'm not, I'm just telling you what I've heard, not passing a judgment on that, but Monica is totally right. You know, the, those are the people that need to be persuaded. So I'm not sure cutting a teacher is going to persuade them. It might just make them more upset that their concerns haven't been addressed and then you're degrading the, because I don't think they really wants to see the school suffer. They do want to see costs contained.
So I guess we'll just keep fielding, unless, unless you guys think otherwise.
Just to finish your previous question, if, if we're going to make decisions, I would love to have numbers on what it means. For instance, to cut a teacher's salary plus, do benefits come out somewhere?
Yeah.
You know, what the actual total number is.
Right.
If we make a change or we discuss making change on administrative side, what are the impacts, you know, what are the alternatives? You know, and what, what's the money associated with them?
So cost and alternatives, if, okay. I do know an FTE with benefits, say, what did we say earlier, forty to sixty? Forty to sixty thousand dollars.
Per teaching position.
Per, per one point O position. So it'd be eighty to a hundred and twenty if you double that.
The benefits are forty to sixty?
No, the total salary and benefits.
Okay, I thought we were talking about a teacher who's sixty-nine.
Yeah. Forty is low. Forty's too low.
It depends who it is.
And it's, it could be the.
Forty is low.
With, with benefits, that's too low.
Well, but it's not a full, it probably wouldn't be a full position at that level, at, at middle level. It'd be a point two of something, a point three. So maybe that's why it, but we'll need to, I guess we need to double check. No, I thought Cindy said that seemed right in the ballpark. But yeah, okay, we'll have to figure a better number for that. Okay. And you had, did you have another question? I mean, you can keep asking even after.
Just that, for any choice that we have to make to be able to understand the actual exact impact, not just, you know, the numbers, but also what we think, you know, is there other staff that has to be shuffled around to accommodate the loss of a full-time person? Do we need another parent? Do we need another office person?
Elaine, are there other budget elements that we had to make assumptions about that are going to be solidified within a timeframe that helps us?
No. All right, Mandy?
Mandy Koskinen, just a little bit about what, what Monica said, we're kind of, I think, jumping into a, where are we going to cut? And what I'd like to come back to is, we were only twenty-five votes short. And that's a very small margin. I feel like we're not really talking about the outreach piece very much. And perhaps that's the conversation that we should start with instead of kind of this, where are we going to take, take away, you know, this budget? How about where are we going to get twenty-five more votes? Because I'm just so, I'm disheartened that we're not kind of approaching it from a, let's make what we have work and, and get the votes that we need instead of the conversation that we're having now. Twenty-five votes is.
And I agree with you, but it's also, we have to figure out if we're going to do anything.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I didn't hear a lot of.
Kind of have to look at the number.
The other part of that discussion.
And the PTO did such a great job in getting a lot of people out to vote and we appreciate that. I guess we'll just keep going back and then come around there.
Yes, maybe. I guess I would just like to encourage you to think about things in a little bit longer term because I, from the anecdotal research that I did amongst people who were considering how they were going to vote, and this goes for parents as well as non-parents, there were parents that voted against at least part of the budget. I know there were. And the reasoning that I heard was that they cannot financially sustain, you know, ten percent increases each year. And so I would encourage you to think about managed growth. This was a business, you'd have a five-year plan showing managed growth with cost expectation projected out so that you could tip your hand to the, to the voters and say, hey, look, we're going to take a hit this year, it's going to go up ten percent or whatever it needs to be, but if you look at our five-year plan, we're expecting costs to drop substantially next year because we're trimming back on personnel, you know, and this is how we're rolling it out. I think that what happens is people see ten percent and they're like, good grief, if this goes up ten percent each year, I'm not going to be able to afford to live here. So I don't think that just coming back with a one-year solution helps show the public with confidence that you're kind of managing the big picture and managing your costs over time. Think it becomes, it almost looks as though we're not seeing the forest through the trees. So, you know, even if, you know, I'm not sure how, how cuts will go in terms of teacher and scaling back versus because of class sizes, but if we could look at that in the context of down the road a little bit, I think it will help people understand how we're, what we're grappling with and, and how we are responsibly, you know, trying to manage costs as some things are continuing to go up. And that's my last point, which is, you know, we live in a town where the housing, the house, there is no new housing. There's not a lot of housing going up. There's no industry that's coming in here. And, you know, without those two things, there's no new tax base. So we also have to make sure that the taxpayers see, look, fuel goes up, you know, teacher salaries, you may not be happy, but at some time you have to pay teachers more money, just like, you know, everybody. And so they may not be happy with whether it's three percent or one percent or two percent, but when, within five years, they're going to need an increase. And so if we can kind of show that, I think people think they want everything to stay the same. But I think we should also be saying to them, look, things don't just stay the same. And you need to be, you know, we all need to be managing our finances together.
Sounds great. I don't know how we do that though. Yeah, but it does sound great. However, the difference between business and public policy is that, and school budgets in particular, is that we control such a small portion of our school budget that we cannot project. We, we don't know what the state is going to come up with for tax rates. We don't know what special needs are going to be present year to year. Those are two big drivers of the budget. And we don't, there are a number of other factors that we can't control. So it would be great, we can say, we, we do project enrollment to come down and we think we'll cut a teacher at X or Y year. We could say that. But beyond that, there is not much more we can say with any kind of confident planning, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, what's out of our control is what every other school district in the state spends because of, you know, Vermont's education finances and we pay for that. So right off the top, when the state tells us what the new basic salary is, that was the primary driver of the whole, the whole thing right there.
But can't we show them how we are maybe managing our own costs and show that as the, you know, the variation factor or something and demonstrate? Because people have a hard time understanding, I, I do understand, I spoke with someone in, for the state in the legislature who was, you know, saying that they're also trying to make themselves look good. And so they're dialing things up and down to make sure that, you know, that their tax rates are, you know, and what they're doing is doesn't make them look like the bad guys. So, you know, I think as much as we can get people to see within our control, you know, this is, this is how we're trying to manage our costs.
But if we showed, you know, in visuals in the paper and others, that our costs over five years are less than inflation, do you see another way that we can present to them? We cut and cut and grew and, you know, over that five-year period, we're less than inflation. Do you think there's other data that would help educate the town better?
People to see it's, that we are at less than inflation when they're also seeing that there's been a three percent teacher increase for several years in a row and that healthcare benefits are going up, you know, was it fourteen percent, ten percent might be the actual? So they're seeing, you know, these things happen. So there's a, I guess, some disconnects with some of the things that might be sore areas for them or things that, that they might have, take issue with, such as teacher salaries. And so you can tell them that you're growing at less than inflation, but then they're saying, well, how come it's going three percent a year for the past three years? Do you know what I mean?
I do. I don't know how we address, but it's good to think about, yeah.
It is tough, but I think that those are some of the big issues is that overall, I keep hearing, I don't know what to expect and I know I can't handle ten percent, so I'm going to send a message that says, you know, no mas. And, and I think that that's the biggest overall hurdle, whether it's a principal or, you know, all these other things. It just comes down to, you have a small tax base and costs go up and it's how do we manage expectations about that, about the inflationary costs that are happening? How do you manage that? How you, how do you manage their expectations as well as manage their, their costs? But probably manage their expectations more than anything.
Thank you. Jill?
Jill Lowery. This may be more of a question for Elaine, but whenever they talk about cutting, they always talk about cutting teachers. And I don't think we ever really hear about cutting the district office for how much like our school spends for all of the money that the district office does for us. So whenever we have to cut our budget, I never hear, maybe somebody can correct me, that the district budget is being cut, you know, by personnel or, or they're, they're pooling their resources to go out and buy the Bridges program for Williston, Heinsberg, Charlotte, Shelburne. And I know that there's been some talk in the state, well, to merge CSS or district, or school districts so we can have a bigger buying power, which I know that a friend of ours who does that for Dartmouth College, they do get colleges together to get more of a buying power. So, so maybe you can just educate me on why, you know, whenever we have to cut, it's always a teacher or a program for our kids, but we never hear about cutting at the district office.
Well, I guess if you attended the SU board meetings and the SU budget meetings, that's where you'd hear about that. And I can tell you that two years ago, they cut sixty-six thousand dollars from the SU budget and that's a huge percentage on a two million dollar budget. So it does happen at that level. I can also say that this is the biggest supervisor reunion in the state of Vermont and you have one superintendent, there's no assistant. You have one business manager, there's no assistant. You have one HR director, there is no assistant. And you have one curriculum instruction and assessment director, there's no assistant. So when you talk about cutting, it's hard to imagine where that's going to happen. You know what I mean? It would be different, you know, like if, if, like, let's say that you had an organization that was flush with positions and you could say, well, you know, times are tough, let's cut, you know, a portion of the assistant superintendent or a portion of the assistant curriculum director, but we don't have those extra positions. We're really one deep in positions. And most of the money at the SU isn't in the core administrative area, it's in what we call purchase services. So what we do is we are the go-between, we provide that service. We say, we will hire for you all of the schools of Chittenden South, for example, your school psychologists. They will hire them based on what you tell us you need. So we do the hiring, we do the supervision, all of that work. And then we say, how many days of a school psychologist do you need, Charlotte? How many days of a technician? Because we do that work that way. So there are a lot of services that we provide that are more like a New York Bosse system. We are the entity that does the work that your friend at Dartmouth does. There's a big part of that budget. And every year, the local boards have to decide what is it they want to buy from us? What is it that they want us to do, to broker for them?
So is that something that should be put at our level, saying maybe to not?
They do. That is part of this process too.
And we've talked a, a bunch of times that for us to go out and get, hire our own psychologist or many of the things that we purchase, we couldn't, we save money by purchasing it through CSSU, sort of, you know, scale of hiring. And also, it's hard to find someone who will be a psychologist for a half a day or whatever. It's, it works out better if we shared them before. And correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine, but the state keeps deciding that more and more things have to go up to the supervisor reunion level. So for their staff to even stay where it is, you know, special ed is going to the supervisor reunion, more and more about curriculum has to be up there.
I mean, that is definitely true. Over the years, there have been definite, there's been legislation that has put more responsibilities at the SU. But every year, the locals discuss what they want to purchase through the SU. And every year, there is a budget process that includes the same process at the SU level. And in fact, this year, we even changed the timeline so that before the SU board voted on a preliminary budget, they brought it back to the locals so that that could inform the conversation at the SU board.
Elaine?
I, I, the SU budget is a, is an interesting beast and there is much of that, again, that we can't control. I think the frustrating part to me about the SU budget is, in a failed budget, we can't look at those decision packs that as a, as a CCS board, we decided we wanted to use or purchase from CSSU. Those are, because they're tied into the budgets of all those others, all the other schools in the SU, we can't now back out of CY. We can't back out of the things that we are required by law to have to have. And, and that's a little frustrating. It's like the, the SU budget is held harmless in any school budget failure. I'm not sure how you get around that, but it does seem a little, you know, there's really not much we can, we can do with it. I mean, I guess we could decide, the only thing we could decide not to do is to purchase the new math curriculum for the, for the middle level because the other schools in the SU are tied to that, but. But the other decision packs we're stuck with. And that seems, you know, then you do have to just focus on what are the things at CCS that can be...
Thank you. Yes, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
Paige Bagnato. So I'm curious if we have information about voter turnout and the breakdown between parents and non-parents that voted. And so in other words, did Part B not pass because more non-parents voted against it versus parents voting for it? And to me, any information that we have along those lines would help direct our efforts moving forward and should the efforts be directed to, towards convincing the, the people that voted against it to come to the other side? Or to get more people who, more parents who are, would be supporting the vote, the vote to just turn out and vote?
Well, I did, I did look at the voter checklist against the school directory and then I didn't vendor the analysis of what proportion were parents versus non-parents who voted. I, I didn't think to do that. But I, around 65% of registered, parents who are registered voters. And some, maybe we could register and just haven't, some are Canadian or whatever reason. But of parents who are registered to vote, 65% voted. So we have room for growth, but the last time the budget failed, I think, Lynn, it was 8% of parents had voted.
And were you able to look at how many of those parents were in primary kindergarten first?
Oh, I have detailed information if you want.
You should set that out. That would be, I think that would be interesting to see.
What we don't know is how they voted.
Yeah, no, it doesn't mean that you voted yes.
That's fine. I think, I don't know, perhaps we can make assumptions how they voted.
We can, yeah.
But nonetheless, I guess I'm just thinking about messaging moving forward and going back to sort of some comments that were made, it's such a small margin, 24 votes. And if, if we, you know, the messaging has been wonderful if you're paying attention, but I think there's a lot of folks that are just busy and not paying attention and don't directly see how this is affecting them. And that perhaps, you know, 24 votes isn't a lot to make up. And if we focus on those younger grades, that could, their children could be very directly affected next September. 50 families per grade, that's, you know, two, two votes per, per household, that's a lot potentially that we could make up in votes.
Yes, good. Thank you. Seth?
I'm still Seth. You know, there's this darn thing called reality. We just had a vote. I believe in being prepared. What's your name? McDermott. Mr. McDermott brought up something. I actually, I think I voted for you. No, there was nobody running against you. I did vote for you, but anyway, the perception that, what's your name, Mary Beth? Yes, the perception is very important. You were talking about rolling up your sleeves, you know, what was that, bridges? There's also a full-time teacher that goes along because it's so complicated just so the teachers know how to do it. Cutting out the shtumey and keeping the story. When you're editing a story, you gotta cut out the stuff that, if you're told you gotta cut out like a thousand words, you gotta cut out the shtumey stuff because you gotta keep the story. So like the things like the bridges or whatnot, you have to at least show the perception to the population that, you know, we rolled up our sleeves, this is what it is. I, don't say, I can't do any better because that's not what they voted. I voted for the budget, okay? But people didn't and you gotta respect that. So what you gotta do is roll up your sleeves and say, okay, let's cut some shtumey out. We don't need bridges and the fancy math that I can't even explain to my own kid. This is what we're talking about. You gotta show the voters that you made your effort, this is not just here, this is going on in Congress. Nobody can agree that this is it for me or this is it for you, we can't agree, forget it. No, you show that you're making an effort to negotiate or to compromise in some way. Cut out some shtumey so you make people happy, then you go back and say, this is what we can do after this, it will affect your education because of bam 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 bam, okay? But you gotta show the population that you're in their corner because you can't say, your vote doesn't count because you didn't understand exactly what I was trying to say.
Well, but there's an alternative, Mr. Zerin. The alternative is that we've cut out the shtumey and we're left with the story and we just didn't educate people the level that we needed to, to convince them of that. We're talking about 25 votes, this is the other part, this is the other part of the audience that's talking about it. But, and somewhere between those two is where we are.
We have 10%.
Sorry?
We have 10%, like 27%.
Rowan and then Jill.
No, I just, I do think that you can go back and look at what you've got and you can find ways to get rid of, you know, something versus, you know, a teacher or that's gonna, something that's gonna really impact our kids' education. I think if you stood outside in the morning and looked at how many parents drop their kids off as opposed to ride the bus, you might be able to get rid of bus, you might be able to get rid of all the buses in the morning, who knows? But there is stuff in here, like there's Mary Mitchell, she gets $3,500 and she's an after, after-hour substitute caller. Okay, do we really need her? It's $3,500, I know, but, you know, you can win a Scrabble game playing all little words, do you know what I mean? Just, just trim stuff, you know? Instead of going out and taking out the big guns and saying, okay, this is what we're gonna do. But I believe that you can find stuff on the other side of the table that doesn't necessarily need to be there. And I think you will find support within the community, parents and non-parents. And I think it's really tough because you guys did a tremendous job at the work that you did presenting the first budget and you did a tremendous job getting the word out there.
Well, we're also in that...
But you know, and you gotta find a balance.
We're also in that situation where as a board, what is our role? Our role is that we, we have to decide, are we gonna trust our administrators to tell us this is what we need and this is why? Or are we gonna try to micromanage and say, we can find someone to do the after-school calling for 2,400?
But I think we need to help them find an answer, you know? We, you drop kids off at school in the morning, I've seen you at the cafeteria, you know what I mean?
They have to come early.
You know? Me too, I gotta get there for band. But you know what I'm saying? Like I think you can't put all the pressure on them. I just don't think you can. I think you gotta help them because on top of everything else that they're doing, they're trying to run a school and to the best of their ability, but there are places that they can cut and maybe you need to help them say, hey, help them out instead of putting all the pressure on them.
Okay. Jill?
I'm still struggling how Heinsberg passed their school budget.
From a floor vote.
They debated for like three hours and somehow, somehow Heinsberg people were convinced that the school is informed to the community. And I think that there are lots of great ideas going on here, but and that's also the question is the school bus. We looked at that about three years ago, can we get rid of the school bus? And said, well, we can't. We did get rid of one of them. And so can we get rid of three of them? And then, you know, and make every kids go two hours on one bus and circling around like, you know, Charlotte, take a sitting tools and by the time we get through, they go like this. And then suddenly, Greg and Audrey suddenly have about 120, 2,000 referrals because we don't know why they're behaving that way.
That's true.
Right? So, 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 so I think there's a lot of great ideas, but the thing is, it's all boiled down to, to, to execution. Is that, where were all you, when we, when we were walking through all this? You know, I only see three people that show up. And suddenly, it always happened after a budget didn't pass, they show up, you know, the board tried to have a straight face, taking all the punches and can they do a better job? Of course, can we do a better job? You better damn sure that we are because we are the one who vote, right? And we are gonna try our neighbors and the kids and the cousins to go vote, yes, we need to pass a budget. So question is that, what, what does Heinsberg do that can pass their budget? Well, we cannot. And they do a 10.2%. And I think last time we were there, I was asking, well, if we take out something, can we, you know, it was 10, 10, over 10%. But we take out their laptop, whatever, and they drop out the 9.40%, you know, 40%. So, so it's, it's so easy to say, I, I think that with the 24 vote, I think we can gather, can we cut more stuff? Also, of course, we can. And Klein has, you know what, and honestly, he finds, Klein has vocals about how he feel about showing the programs. And I respect that because that's a way for board of more than one person. Otherwise, one person would say, well, this is what we will do, we sign off, call dictatorship, right? And I don't expect that board is going to be agree on, that's why we're the, that's what we're, the majority. And Klein's entitled to his, his opinion whether or not we agree with him or not. I mean, however, we also need to look at the facts that all the information that we need, they're all out there. I read every single newspaper that comes to my doors and all the information are there. But whether or not people are picking up on us and we're all busy, hey, but you know what? I, I, I put a pair of pants and a shirt, meaning it's important for me to dress properly, go to a meeting. So we need to take responsibility. The community need to take responsibility. There are people who will not vote for the school budget no matter what we do. We heard those are people in the same rooms. I heard them, there's no matter what you do, I will vote no. I know that parents voting no on for whatever reasons. I mean, to me, I'm still struggling is how can Heinsberg still can have 10.2%? We cannot.
You know it, Elaine?
Well, but the thing is, is that...
Yes. Hardly anyone goes to their meeting.
No, they had 200 people at their meeting, but the presentations that some people have alluded to happened at the meeting. And it was a hard meeting, but when they were done with the presentation, everybody there really understands what they're voting for.
How'd they get 200 people? I've never, the only time...
Well, no, because it's not Australian ballot. The only way you get to vote...
What was it, town meeting?
There, there's no Australian ballot. You vote at the meeting after you've been informed. So there's nobody voting without being informed. It doesn't mean that everybody votes the same way, although I will tell you that in the seven years I've been there, at least five of them, it's been unanimous. But was not unanimous this time. And it is though, they're informed voters because they're all there. So whether they read the newspaper or not, the question is sure to be asked. And the answer is heard by everyone and that makes a difference.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sure that it does too. And then it all goes down to the same thing that we have with our town meeting is that the 200 people show up is gonna make a decision on what we pay on our tax for the, for everything else.
That is contentious in Heinsberg too.
Right. So I mean, I mean, so my question is to all the folks here is that what can we all do to, you know, to help the school? It's, it's easy to say, well, you guys should do this, you guys should do this. And I come, one, two, three, four, five people, so really on the board and these people, they have their other life too. And instead of like, what can they do for us is what can we do to help them to do a better job? Instead of keep throwing things over there, well, you should do a survey or you should do ask people. What for us? I mean, should we helping them to find all some of those, those like answers and rally like troops and I mean, basically, I'm, you know, I, I mean, I understand the floor votes. I mean, I've been there to our town like my meetings, I get ahead of just being there sometimes, but, but, but I'm asking the, the community here is to say, can we cut more stuff? Of course, like, like we can. And Klein said, well, do we, we need the 289,000, what effect? Maybe we do, maybe we don't, but we are already don't have enrichment like programs, things are already in cuts and how much more do we cut before this community becomes not a community that they want to move to? I said, in one meeting is we are competing, we are competing as a town for talents and money and family coming into this town, keep it viable, keep it sustainable, right? You know, if, I mean, if all the time, oh, you know what? Heinsberg is a better place because they passed 10% too much, I'm gonna move my kids over there. Right? So I mean, basically, I'm asking the community, let's help them, okay? Not just pass up on their places, let's help them to make a better like decisions. Come to the board like meeting, it's fine.
Andrew and then Mary Beth.
I'd like to echo what Seth said a little bit. I don't know Seth and he speaks a little differently than I do about some of these issues, but I think he's got a real point. You know, I voted for the budget, I, I advocated for it on the forum, I have kids in the school I would like to have seen it pass. It didn't pass. I think there were a substantial number of people in the town who were opposed to it. I realize it's only 27, so the question is, how can we pick up, you know, the incremental undecideds or how can we nudge people over the line? And I guess I'd encourage all the folks on the board to think about a number in their head that would get people to, to vote yes. And as, as, as much as I don't like to say it, I do think this is a bit of a marketing challenge. Showing a complicated presentation, showing how inflation changes and this element is fixed and this is, is variable is going to be a tough sell. I think if you're able to, to present to the voters, we went back and we cut out all the fat and we eliminated something between 25 and 50% of this discretionary Part B, I think you'd have a, a very meaningful chance at passing. I don't know what that number is. I'd like it to be as low as, as possible, but I think if you wanna pass this thing, you don't wanna have it be a disaster of, of going back repeatedly to the voters. I think coming up with a collective percentage off that, that you think would pass the town and not do undamaged to the school, it makes a whole lot of sense. And I think if you can bullet it with a lot of line items that people think of as fluff, to Rowan's point, that would be all the better. And then you've got a fairly compelling story. We lopped off 30% and these are the items we lopped off, help us now. I, I think that would, would, would get you over the, over the line.
Kristin?
I don't think I could have said it better myself.
Mr. Sampson made a point about an hour ago. And this gentleman, whose name I miss, is essentially making the same point. And it's actually a point I made previous to the budget vote. The way that this has to move forward is that you have to present to the public, this is specifically what this will pay for or what, if you don't have it, it will not pay for specifically. We're not obligated, we can pass a budget and then once we get that budget passed, we can spend it on whatever we want. I mean, that's the law. It's not, we present it on a line item basis, but we're not obligated to that as an aside. It's a common sense thing to be obligated that way. If you tell the public, this is what you're gonna do, we're going to do with your money, that's what you ought to do. But then beyond that, the only way this process is going to move forward is for the board, a voting majority of the board anyway, to decide philosophically, based on those numbers, what things will pay for or will not pay for. How much, what you believe is to be needed or is needed. And there's a lot of slipping and sliding in this process because I can tell you from experience that basically the people sitting here know now what they're committed to philosophically. They may be able to trim that a little bit or find some things here and there that they could live without, but the overall philosophical decisions, these folks have already made really, and you've heard them say that. So what you need to do, what we need to do is look at the numbers that have been presented, state which of those numbers you support, publicize those reasons. And the town, the electorate is either gonna support that or not support it based on whether or not they agree with you. If they have specific information and you've made whatever case it is you're trying to make for what will or will not be the effect of certain dollar amounts. I really don't think, I think you can, the board can move forward with this in a fairly concise timeframe. Simply because if, if the community has a clear statement about what your beliefs are and again, what the costs are associated with that, they'll make their decision based on that. And if you have made that, that association clear, this is what we believe in, this is what it's going to cost, if it fails again, then you're gonna have pretty concrete information about, I don't think so. And that would leave open the question of, did the people who voted no vote no because they didn't want another administrator or did they vote no because they didn't want more computers if that were the case? Or did they vote no because they thought... If that were the case, or did they vote no because they thought we had an extra teacher? But you'll have pretty good information. If you present a proposal that is itemized and specific and that is not ambiguous, that's the best you can do. And in reality, that's the way the board has always gone forward. We didn't look, we don't usually look for a particular number. We look for a philosophical educational statement and commitment. And you say that and let the people decide, but you need to be clear about it.
Thank you. To that end, are there other things that the board would like information on in advance of the next meeting to help inform any decision? So does it make sense that if things come up, you know, well, I guess we'll have to schedule another meeting. If questions do arise or, you know, someone in the community asks you something that it's quite helpful for the administration if requests get funneled through me and then go on to Elaine, if we can do it that way? And I guess we'll try to get this information as soon as possible so people can digest it before having to make any conclusions about how to move forward. So does it make sense to try to schedule some meetings for next week?
Kristin, could you just get a little bit more clarity on what direction the board would like Andre and I to take between now and the next meeting? In terms of bringing back to the board?
Well, I think, and I don't even know if this comes from you or from Seth's office, but information about the total cost savings for FTE reduction of teachers. And I assume we mean middle level, but I guess also it could be for that sec... the first grade teacher who would become a secretary.
We already had that figured out.
Which that, we're rolled to sixty-nine. I don't know if that's salary plus.
So specifically associated with the proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the associated support services, word language, expressive arts.
Yes, and I'm sure that's hard to pair up, but that would be... that would be good information for us to have. And then I think the other thing that Eric mentioned was if there was a change to administrative structure, what would be the cost savings and how would things... I mean, how would we get the stuff done that needs to get done? What would be the change?
What are the ramifications?
Right. Would we then have... I don't even know.
That could be in Elaine.
Yeah. So I think what... So cost of any change and the alternatives to that structure. Were there... Did I miss anything that people were looking for to tell?
I mean, it sounds like the bus thing seems to be an issue for some voters. I know nothing about it, so if that really is on the table, I guess we need to have some information on whether that...
And our bus contract's up, right? It's coming up.
Right now, we're working on that.
Yeah.
What would you like to know about the buses?
I mean, can you really just do that?
You might want to be careful when you talk about transportation because there's revenue associated with that. So if you cut all of the buses, you're then also going to take out revenue, which isn't going to do business for the tax rate. So I think it's good to make sure that we're not oversupplying. We don't have too many buses. But I think if you're talking about getting rid of buses, I think you might want to know what does that mean in terms of reduction to revenue as well?
Another way of saying I know absolutely nothing about buses.
The answer is that as far as buses are concerned, we're not obligated to provide bus service. If we provide it for one person, we have to provide it for everybody. We've done surveys in the past about ridership. And the general answer is the morning is poorly used, the afternoon is more heavily used. And as far as the money is concerned, our bus contract now is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, something like that. But as Lynn points out, rule of thumb, whatever amount of bus service you eliminate money-wise, you're really only going to save about half of that because the way the payback is structured is we get about half of that back. So for example, if we did away with the morning bus run and in theory cut out a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, a hundred and ten thousand, you'd actually be saving about fifty. That's before you even discuss the ramifications for the community in terms of how are the kids who do ride the buses going to get to school in the morning?
And there's been a lot of work that's, a lot of research that's been done about ridership and how many buses and the length of route and how many kids are on each bus at which time. And I feel like that work's been done and we've come to those conclusions. I'm not interested in going down that road personally.
It was looked at very closely. Though maybe we could pull, maybe we could just pull out that...
Yeah, I don't have to do any more work on it. Just understand if somebody has a question, I'd be able to be informed.
Just listening to the questions you're asking in terms of the information that you want to gather, I just want to put it out there that I'm concerned that the presentation given tonight potentially makes it too easy to go directly to teachers as a thing to cut. That you're looking for those numbers, two FTE plus whatever else in expressive arts, you know, those fractions. That becomes too easy an answer. So just throw that out there.
I just want to say, I mean, I wouldn't... Because of the number, because we're talking about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, there's nothing but staff that adds up to those numbers. I mean, we can piece together five thousand dollars here and ten thousand dollars there, but to get to two hundred and ninety, if that, if we decided we needed to get there, it's, there's nowhere you can go except staff.
Right, but just in terms of presenting a Part B, re-presenting a Part B with a fraction, you know, a percentage taken out of it, you don't have to make quite as deep cuts to staff. Maybe some, but not all.
A good faith effort.
But if we're...
It's showing we're looking at everything.
Exactly. And if part of what we say is, this is what we reduced because if we reduce further, it has this implication for staffing. I mean, just to get very concrete about that, as Tim and others have said, I think it's good to keep that, get those numbers clear.
Mary Beth and Sue.
I just quickly wanted to say that I very much appreciated Joe's comments and I agree with them. And I wanted to kind of get people thinking about, because I keep thinking five years from now, where are we going to be, how are we going to do this every year? Because as we look at declining enrollment, what happens is that's also fewer parents who can try to pass the budget. So, you know, we've gotten to this point and there's only so much voter turnout. Sixty-five percent is actually a lot, a big turnout. So you're only going to get, can you get twenty-four more votes? Maybe. But really, we're talking about building trust with the community and trust and respect that the board is making good and just decisions for the community, weighing all of the issues and making smart decisions. And I think that there's a couple of things happening. I think that, you know, divisiveness amongst the board might be adding to the question in people's minds about what decisions are being made. So it would be nice if there could be some, at least some things that there is some consensus on. And I think that the other thing is really helping to engage, look for ways to engage the community in the school, if at all possible. So as you're looking at, Greg and Audrey are looking at community building events and things to do, perhaps getting more retired people and older people within the community to engage and see what's happening at the school may help. But somehow or another, I think, you know, it is the, it is, you know, there's some people we're never going to convince, but we got to look at the middle to see how are we going to bring those people along and build that consensus if we want to try to get to yes. Because that's where my pet is in. How do we, how do we get to yes? That's all.
Okay, Sue, and then maybe we'll try to set some dates.
Sue Tebow, as I agree with what Kim said, it's unfortunate that this presentation was right before our budget conversation. I really hate to see you cut teachers because I think you might lose a couple of the yes votes that you've had from parents if you cut the teachers. We've gotten in trouble that in the past. And as I was going through my old school board papers, I got rid of fifty-seven pounds of recycling paper. But I saved a few pieces of paper. And two of these were from two thousand eight. Items included in the budget not explicitly required by law. Things that were in excess of the school quality standards, whether it was a point eight instead of a point one, you know, library paraeducator or something. But there are some things that we, if we want to go there, Kristin, I hear what you're saying about not micromanaging. That's why we're likely to bring this up. But if the community is asking us to do a little bit more due diligence and look more finely at what's extra, there are some things that we found that are not required by law, concert choir or assemblies. The things that I value for sure is especially on the heels of the culture report that we got, these are all very important things, but they're not required by law. And they don't affect the class sizes, which has a bigger impact, I think, than perhaps some of these things on this list. So if the board would like information on what else there is besides teachers, that might be information that would be helpful for you to look at, just to say you looked at it and you still need to put it in the budget. This would help because it's two thousand eight, but you might want to ask for a new list. And we did end up cutting a fair amount from this list, I think.
So I just want to say that we talked at various times through this meeting about the twenty-five votes and how to get those twenty-five votes. The people who would like to pass Part B are looking for, how do we get those twenty-five votes? But I think it's, I think we really should be thinking in terms of, we're back to zero. We can't assume the people who voted for and against are all going to vote again and that we're now looking for twenty-five more people if we want that Part B to pass. We're really, we're really trying to get everyone back to the polls to express their opinion and participate civically and hope that in the end, a majority agree with whatever our next move is as a board. I just needed to make that point.
Yes, Joe.
I think that also the board, once when you make a decision, you just need to stick with it. If the board feel that that's a budget that we need, that's a budget that we need to go and communicate to the community. Because otherwise, it will be like a kid. Each time you give a little bit, and the kid says, oh, geez, I got a kid. Maybe I'll ask for a piece of cake next time. I'll ask for, you know, angry birds and whatever. Yeah, I mean, of course, only my kid, I mean, not your kids. But I think it's also a consistency and conviction behind the administrative numbers. If that's what you feel that that's what it takes to run a school and that's what we need to go sell it to the community. And that's also a conviction that people need to see is that this is what it is and we have to do this. And if not, then these are the parts that you will see. And then we, as a community, we all have to deal with that. So I would like to, instead of like keep funding the five, you know, five thousand here, ten thousand there, or two hundred each, look at the budget, think about who that is like, and just stick like that. And go sell it to the community and say, this is what it is.
Thank you. So to Sue's point, is there interest in, from board members to get a list similar to what we received in two thousand eight of things that are in the budget that are not required by law?
That's helpful.
I mean, we could just photocopy Sue's list. Hand it over.
Well, but it probably hasn't changed a whole lot.
Okay. So Sue, if we can borrow her last and give it back, that'd be helpful. Okay. So moving on, can we see about scheduling for next week? And does it make sense to try to do a meeting next Tuesday?
Twenty-sixth.
Tuesday is the twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Could you do that?
You're talking about an evening meeting?
Yes.
Like this, same thing, same time, same place?
Same time, same place. The twenty-sixth, and then presuming that at the twenty-sixth... So that would not end up being a community forum piece necessarily? Trying to like keep all the, like what were required by law?
You don't have to have a community forum, and what you had tonight is pretty good.
A lot of good information.
A lot of good information.
So if we do the twenty-sixth...
Elaine, we don't have a nego, some negotiations meeting, do we?
I don't have a...
Training or something?
Not on that.
I don't have my calendar with me.
I think they start in April. So does it make sense then to do, you know, presuming that Tuesday, we might be coming up with a figure?
Yes.
Does it make sense then to schedule the next meeting as well? And how, I mean, as we discussed at the beginning, we can really try to get this going fast. We could say we're going to schedule the twenty-sixth, have another meeting two days later. Or we can do the twenty-sixth and then... Well, we kind of, if we want to have, if we're thinking we want to have a re-vote on the ninth or sixteenth.
So I'm gone the first week of April, right?
That's right. And Eric's gone the first week of April. So does it make sense to try to do two days next week to get a final number so that then we can hold a public information meeting the week he's back and then have the vote following? We can't get a final number next Tuesday?
Well, you might, but you might want to take a little bit of time to think about it. I mean, and come back on Thursday.
I'm not, I'm saying that because I'm not going to be able to come back on Thursday.
Okay.
But...
I mean...
Well, can we just schedule, can we schedule the twenty-sixth and then, I mean, there's a possibility we would need to schedule another. So can we think that we're going to go on the twenty-sixth for the next board budget meeting? Then public information meeting would be April ninth, re-vote April sixteenth. People are in such a good mood the day after tax day, really. Maybe they're all getting refunds, I don't know. Does that schedule, or is there another, something, some other timeline people would want to propose? We have a, we have a Charlotte news in there. So I think probably on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, you know, whatever decision we come to, we can then discuss sort of that bigger strategy of what we want to get out in that next edition of the news and what other information, how we want to disseminate any other information if we want to go around to the senior center, you know, any sort of other plan of educating the public. So do those dates make sense to people? Twenty-sixth, nine, six, and the sixteenth?
Kristin, the dates are fine, but what, in my view, is absent here is a little tough on the new people because I suspect that you and Adora have pretty set opinions on where you will go. What you need to know is whether, what you want to avoid is coming back to successive meetings and having people ask for information and need further clarification. So the question you really have to ask now is of these two folks specifically, is there anything you need to know to form an opinion? I mean, you've seen the numbers, you've been a little bit part of the conversation, so you're at least familiar with it. But in order to ask these guys, these people for an answer next week, seven days, if there's more information they need beyond what they have now, either you're going to have to plan for another meeting or you're going to have to find a way to make sure that they absolutely get it. This cannot be kind of an amorphous, well, we might do this, we might do that. But if you're going to ask them for a decision, they got to have that information, whatever it might be.
Well, we did talk about...
Well, we did talk about having the meeting next week, and then if we needed a further meeting, talking about it then.
And I think too, you know, they've asked for this certain data. If, if something else comes up when you're thinking about it between now and then, you certainly should, you know, let me know. And if I don't have the information, I'll find out how I can get it for you. I know it's a very hard position to be sitting there right after a budget failed. It really is, you just feel so put on the spot right away.
And I'm, I don't know that I'm, I'm a little bit more experienced in this, but I don't, I don't know where I'm coming out. Just, I don't. So I have to do the same thinking that everyone else does.
Okay, so if anything else comes up that any of us, Clyde, Adora, any of us need, we'll try to get all that in advance of Tuesday. So we've set twenty-sixth, the ninth, and the sixteen. All right, we're going to move on to six point four, CSSU representation. The Cessu Board Meeting. The representatives from CVU expressed their desire to increase their representation on the board. Currently, all the school buildings have three representatives, and St. George has one. And that's what's required by statute. You can get a waiver or an exemption or something if you want to change that representation. And CVU's reason for asking for it is, well, for one thing, we all have boards of five, and we have three people who sit on the CSSU board. So it's, it's certainly not representative of the full viewpoints on any board. But you have the majority of a board who's sitting on the CSSU and making decisions and hearing information about the supervisor union and then can communicate back also. So CVU feels with just three, it's hard for them to fully represent their eleven members. And it, sometimes it's harder for them to, to communicate back and, and express all the variety of opinions and programs and whatever from CVU to the greater board. And since their students make up about a third of all of the kids in the supervisor union, they would like to add a fourth member. So they're looking for, and I think David Rath is probably going to draft a letter that the other local boards will see in April. But since our board meeting is after the CSSU board meeting, we just thought we'd see if people have strong opinions one way or the other about it, so we can let them know if, where we, where we think we would stand on that issue. So does anyone have an opinion, one way or the, one way or the other, about CVU having a fourth representative on the board?
I think they should. I'm in support. I agree.
Any other?
Yeah, I guess I don't know enough about it to say.
I'm kind of indifferent. I really don't, I don't think the logic is convincing. But if they'll feel better about it, that's fine with me.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, seven point O, action matters. Seven point one, adopt regional calendar. We have a motion to adopt the regional calendar for two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
So moved.
Second?
Can I just remind you that this is the calendar that is developed by the area superintendents, all of whom are connected to the Burlington Tech Center and the Essex Tech Center? And by law, this is the calendar that you do have to adopt. This is just the one hundred and seventy-five student day. And you will see next month, a calendar that will then include professional development and parent-teacher conferences. And that is a calendar that you can choose to adopt or not.
So this, we can vote no, but we really.
It won't make a difference, so.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, I am going to vote no. This is a good example of how, of the, when you follow this through, how this plays out and what we do here, it's a good example of how decisions made at a level where you have nothing to say about anything complicate your life. And you, Kristen, in particular, are familiar with some of this. So even though it's meaningless, I'll vote no, because it's a, it's a flaw, it's a design flaw.
So I would just point out that it's by statute that the area superintendents are the ones who develop the calendar. We don't make it up.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seven point two, affirm code of conduct. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at this. Do I have a motion to affirm the code of conduct?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I, this is taken right from the V S B A, is that right? So this is a, this is a form that was developed by the Vermont School Boards Association. And it just helps us, you know, reminds us of things we should be thinking about in our role as school board members. So, and I, do we even sign it? I can't remember.
I don't think that you have officially signed it, but you do take a vote.
Yeah, we've instead done an affirm. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seven point three, approve SURF locker project for twenty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Does anyone want a second?
Well, could you just bring me up to speed on this? Is this?
So the SURF.
Well, there's a motion, so somebody gives a second.
Yeah, and then we would vote yes.
I'll second.
You don't have to vote for it in the end.
I'll second.
So the SURF construction fund is our monies that are, can you explain this line?
Money left over from your construction project and can only be used for capital expenditures. So it's not like you could take this money and say, let's apply it to our budget.
This locker expense was originally a decision packet that the administration presented us in their budget hopes and dreams. And we realized it was one item that we could assign to this other pot of money, so that wouldn't.
How much money is in the SURF these days?
Does any, oh, remember? One left.
I believe the last meeting, there was an update on that. I believe it's between fifty and sixty.
Yeah, I think that's my recollection, too. And if you've been upstairs, the lockers are pretty, pretty good. And so if we don't, if we don't approve that, we don't have the lockers. That money stays in and it, you know, you have the full fifty or sixty for some other construction project. But it's, you know, the administration recommended it as a decision packet. And I think it's something that we should tackle now rather than pushing it down the road. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Fifty-three oh six eight, excuse me.
Thank you. Seven point four, personnel. Seven point four, one, approve, do I have a motion to approve a point two FTE leave of absence request for tech integration specialist? I don't have these documents, do you have them?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they're back. Hold on. I'm sorry, I do have them. So do I have a motion to approve the point two FTE leave of absence request for tech integration specialist?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Someone will have to explain the details.
Yes, that'd be great. Gregor, if you don't have.
So we have a tech integration specialist who has been on, who just completed a second year of a leave of absence from a full-time teaching position. It was the result of a reduction in the tech educator position from full-time to eighty percent. So that teacher exercised their right to request a leave of absence from the full-time position so that they could retain rights to that full-time position. They are requesting a third year of that leave of absence. And if approved, it would be their intention to remain in the eighty percent tech educator position, but retain their rights to a full-time teaching position. And Audrey and I support the request.
And if we, just so people understand, if we, if that leave isn't granted, then Ed Biaki can exercise his rights under the contract to become, to go back into a classroom as a point off.
According to what Greg just said, he's going to retain that right irregardless. He wants to retain that right.
Right.
Right, but if we say no, you can't have this leave of absence, he's going to vote no.
But my point is, are we going to go on from year to year? Are we approving this, or, I mean, we, or, these folks were not here for the initial discussion, but it was because of the way we were restructuring our, that service. And as I recall, the person involved wanted to see how that was going to play out in terms of his employability. So down the road, what's the point here? Why is it that this decision cannot just be made now for, he's going to have that role forever?
It's, if, if you deny his request, he is saying that he wants to be a hundred percent.
Oh, I understand that.
A one point oh FTE. So he won't stay in that role forever, he will go into a classroom.
Well, that's my point. How long is this going to go on? I mean, at some point, there ought to be a final decision made on this. Whoever this, whoever we're talking about here, although we all know who it is. Which way do you want it to be? Do you want to go on as a point eight in the, on this side of it? Or do you want to go back into the classroom so that this doesn't come up perpetually?
Right, I'm going to be making this up because I've not had a conversation with Ed about this, so I am making it up. But it possibly could be that if you wanted to guarantee that he has an eighty percent position until the day he retires, that he might make that choice. But there's nothing that guarantees that you might not cut that position further, in which case then he wouldn't want that position. I don't know this, but I'm just thinking if I were that person in that situation, these are the kinds of things that I would be considering when I'm deciding, okay, maybe eighty percent, I can make work. But if the board next year, because they're in another situation, decides they're going to go to sixty percent, maybe I know I can't make that work.
Well, I think that's exactly why, but my point is this. That's really no way to manage a thing, our resources. And we need to get, I mean, we never know what the board next year or five years from now, and this can't go on forever, this, this person just protecting that right. If we eliminate a position or eliminated, change the way we deliver those computer services, we don't know. As the conversation we've had tonight indicates, from year to year, who knows? So we don't really employ other professional people on this basis. I mean, they have the right to bump in the event that we, or the board, whatever the board is, eliminates a position. But this is getting, there ought to be a decision made one way or the other here. He's going to be in that role and take his chances with that, or go back into the classroom and.
Well, I, here's what I can guarantee you, based on Ed's letter, is that if you deny him the request, he will be in the classroom.
I understand that, but my point is, it sounds like, from what you said, he wants to maintain that right forever.
Because he wants to make, he's, he's just, I'm, I don't, I'm not.
I understand all that, but I just think it's another.
I think when you're managing a school and you're thinking about who are the best people to put in what positions, that people are happy with the situation that they're in now, with Ed in the eighty percent tech position. So that's why they support it, he's happy there, they believe that's the best place for him. And so because of that, and because it's not really setting much of a precedent, because the only reason he's in that situation is because there was an initial RIF. Usually what happens when somebody is RIF is they immediately bump some, somebody else. Because he likes the, the role he's in, and because the school thinks that that's a good place for him to be, we've continued to support his request. It's, that's the decision you're going to have to make, because guaranteed, if you don't honor the request, he will go to the classroom. So he'll be someplace that he maybe wouldn't be his first choice, and maybe wouldn't be the administration's first choice.
And in the event that we did not honor that request, and he went back into the classroom, how would the service that he provides now, under this arrangement, be provided? Who would do that?
You'd have to hire somebody else. At eighty percent clean, it's an eighty percent contract.
And then that person would be first in line for RIF if we were to reduce or change that position?
Yes, and the complication of how we do RIFs is, let's say that you hired somebody who had happened to be a classroom teacher in the past and wasn't the newest person hired and could fill in a slot, kind of the question that you were asking before about the math teacher, might not be the person who gets RIFed. It's not as straightforward as last in, first out.
Right, the contract, there are other considerations.
Right.
But depending on the certification of the person who is hired, the odds are that that person would be first in line to be RIFed. I think we're just making our lives unnecessarily complex, and we should have this person decide whether he wants to be the computer guy or wants to be in the classroom and be done with it. Because we also have a little bit of an obligation to people that we hire in the future, or have already hired, for their lives to be a little more clear.
This is a board decision, yeah.
I think it's a, it's a unique situation with Ed. It would be nice if it was cleaner, but I think that by approving it, we keep Ed in a position where the administration wants him, and we keep the classroom teachers we have where they are. I'm, I think it's, I'm prepared to vote yes for that leave. Any other discussion or questions?
No. Yeah, it wouldn't have been my choice in how to structure a contract, but that's not our choice. It's already done.
Right.
He's got the option, so.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Seven point four point two, do I have a motion to approve a point two FTE leave of absence request for guidance position? Second?
Second.
And this, as you recall, last year, we granted a point two leave to Kathy Batty. We have two point eight guidance counselor positions. And so Kathy's position went down to point six, and the new guidance counselor, Vicki Nelson's, position went to a one point oh. So the administration's request is to continue that for this coming year. Any questions or?
Well, that's Kathy's request, and the administration supports it.
And I guess the one question, and we didn't do it for the last one, although Sue reminded us, is have you considered the cost implications of these requests? So is there an additional cost on the budget for allowing that?
This one's basically, no.
No, not for this one. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seven point four point three, do I have a motion to approve a point four FTE reduction for special education teacher?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And so this is Trish Healy's request to extend her, or no, to, no, she's not here at all right now. So to come back as a point six. So she like to, she's requesting a point four reduction to become a permanent point six employee. And so these are all, I don't know why I can't speak tonight. These are all things that you. These are all things that you are recommending?
Yes.
That's the question, okay. So, the, to have her come back as a point six instead of a one point oh that she had been before she left.
Doesn't mean hiring a point four.
Correct.
So, the budget implications of that?
Would depend on who we hire.
Right, so, the assumption...
Or two best guesses.
You make an assumption about...
In a specialized area, it's very, it's like school counselors, special educators, the pool is so much smaller, and the specialized licenses required.
Especially when you're talking about a point four, then the applicant pool is even smaller.
Right. We actually expect it not to be a point four, we expect to link this point four to the other point four that we're adding due to the service plan, which makes that a more of an attractive hire.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Of a point eight. So, any savings that might be realized would be a guess, and we hesitate to do that, because we don't know what we're gonna realize.
Yep.
Could break even, could do better.
Could do worse, okay. Any other questions or...
I guess, I'm not sure I totally followed that, so she now is full-time?
She was, she's on leave, this is her second year.
This is her second year being on leave.
So, she's supposed to come back in the fall, one point oh, she wants to come back as point six.
And what's in the budget now?
One point, one point oh.
One point oh, she's in the budget as one point oh.
We'd still have the same amount of staffing, we would just fill that. She's, she's relinquishing forty percent of her job, and we'll fill it with somebody else.
Actually, the really important question here is, based on the nature of her, or that person's workload and the way it's structured, and the interaction with the students, does having two different people in that position affect the quality of that work?
Well, we asked Connie to do that work, and she came back with a staffing plan that we're both in support of. We also like the, 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 yeah, the additional piece of Ed making that point four now a point eight that we'd be hiring for, which we think is gonna enhance that pool, that candidate pool.
So, your answer is no, and in fact, it'll be better this way?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point four point four, approve leave of absence request for math coordinator position. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Pam Piper's asking for a...
Leave of absence?
One year leave of absence, and her position is point eight at present.
So, what happens with the, the role she currently...
We'd have to hire, we'd have to hire someone for one year.
So, of course, again, you're gonna tell me it depends on who you hire, but the financial implications of replacing her for a year, she's a pretty senior person, right? So, it's unlikely we'd end up spending more, a replacement for her for a year.
But what, what's the likelihood we can find?
I mean, it seems like there's a million teachers.
I think I asked Molly that, and she seemed to think that there were people out there. There's a pool of candidates that we can target.
I asked that would be willing to take a one-year position. Sure, Danielle, do you want the job?
When someone on leave of absence, they're being paid?
No.
No.
It's unpaid.
But it's holding her position for her.
Okay. So, then basically, we're just paying for a substitute in any of these positions, or just in the passporting?
They get a, all of them, they get a, each person who leaves gets nothing. And then we hire, that's why Adora keeps asking the question about what's the money implication. So, sometimes we know that when, if we're, if it's a senior person who's leaving, and it's a teaching position, we can assume that we're probably gonna be hiring somebody with less experience. So, we know there's gonna be a little money savings in that case. So, the person that gets hired gets hired on a one-year contract. So, it's not a substitute, they have a full teaching position, but a one-year contract.
And what about all the math changes that are coming up next year with seventh and eighth grade math? We had that meeting on, and Pam's role in that and...
Can help implement that. We wanna try to find someone who has experience with CMP three, the new model. That would be the best case scenario. But Molly seems to think there's a pool of candidates.
I don't even, I feel like we're breaking the rules by doing the questioning, but I don't know what I'm doing, obviously.
Hey, we'll take advantage of that. Pay attention on finding a suitable replacement, this, this motion.
You can, you can do that, if you want to, I mean, I don't...
Yeah, I don't think that's very fair to the person who's asking us for this. We're either gonna give it to them or not.
We, I mean, we have done that before for S L P, because it's hard to find S L Ps.
Because she has a, she has more roles in the district, exactly, she also is member of schools.
No, no.
She's point eight here.
She's host here.
That's it.
So, what do people think? Do people wanna make a contingent, or just yes or no?
I don't think it's necessary or relevant in this case.
Anyone else have a desire to make a contingent? I guess we can, we'll have to rely on Molly's assurance that we'll be able to find a suitable replacement. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eight point oh, is there any need to remove anything from the consent agenda? That's me. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Directors' comments. Anyone have any directors' comments, Clyde? Eric?
Look.
I would like to welcome Eric Mark to the board, and I've already appreciated your contributions. I look forward to working with you.
I second that.
And thank you so much to the P T O for their work in general in our school, and for getting out the vote, and for the lovely spread you put out to the people of the town. I think that was really appreciated, and it was very lovely, thank you.
And thank you also to the public for showing up.
All right, ten point oh, confirm next meeting date. CSSU Policy Committee meeting is tomorrow morning. CSSU Board meeting, April tenth at five. Our next board meeting is not April sixteenth, we're gonna have one before that, this Tuesday.
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth.
At six or six-thirty?
It should be our regular time.
Yeah, I guess it's fixed, that's it at our regular time. Our next regular school board meeting is April sixteenth at six-thirty. We will have some things in the interim. And CSSU Board chair's meeting, April thirtieth at eight a.m.
There was one more hand out there somewhere.
No, I can't, not now. You can ask us after. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you.